I'm not bound to win, but I am bound to be true. I am not bound to succeed, but I am bound to live up to what light I have. Tonight, as we gather here in these chambers and pledge allegiance to the flag of a nation which Lincoln helped keep together, let us pray with his words of wisdom in our minds. Let us pray that we are reminded that we are bound to be true to ourselves and to those whom we serve, that we not measure our worth by our success, but by how honest and true we have been to the values and principles which we serve and swore to uphold. Let us pray for this and peace in our city, our nation, and around the world tonight, and always, amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the February 10th, 2015, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was supposed on Friday, February 6th, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. The next item?
Next item is presentation and appointments at 3:00 a.m. Agenda previews for the meetings of Tuesday, February 17th, 2015.
Ms. Beers?
Mayor Protem Najarian, members of the City Council, for the February 17th, 2015 meeting for the City Council, as well as the Housing Authority. All meetings have been canceled for that day. However, on February 24th, I'd like to announce that we do have a special meeting of the City Council, and that will be our first work boot Tuesday, which will be held at the Glendale Water and Power Grayson Power Plant, which is at 800 Airway. And we will have an actual meeting there, and it'll be discussion regarding Glendale Water and Power. We will have an overview of Glendale Water and Power, look at power plant operations, and do a site visit. And this is open to the public, and it will commence at 3:00 p.m. that afternoon at 800 Airway, and that is, of course, in Glendale. That evening, we will commence the council meeting for a very short period of time. We will have one item under hearings, and that's at 6:00 p.m., and that is fire chief, and this is regarding the annual weed abatement program for 2015. And again, that's for February 24th.
Ms. Beers, the power plant is a secure facility, so will there be any searches of belongings or persons wishing to enter and join us for the meeting?
No, there will not be, Mr. Najarian. We will allow the public to come in, and we will be in areas where the public can access. And so the tour will be happening in that area, and we will have security, of course, onsite.
And I will probably be absent, with an excused absence, to go to Sacramento to lobby on behalf of the Glendale and the Independent Cities Association for public safety and other essential services for independent cities. So forgive my absence.
Mr. Weaver?
I'm just wondering, what are the restrictions on footwear? I guess that's important.
On footwear?
Footwear. Because I've read something about certain things, no, no, no. No heels, no...
You want to wear comfortable shoes, so that you can walk around?
Yeah, tracks and stuff.
Because we won't be sitting down, we'll actually be walking around, so I think comfortable shoes...
I mean, if you're going to be on top of any of the grading anywhere there, you wouldn't want heels.
No. I would suggest no heels, and closed-toed shoes would probably be best.
Okay. Pacemakers are okay? Mylar balloons?
No Mylar balloons.
No Mylar balloons. None of those, please.
Squirrels, no pet squirrels, please. Okay, that'll be an interesting, I think that'll be an interesting meeting, so we invite all of you that can find time to do so. You'll see us up close and personal and see the famous Grayson Power Plant in action.
So we'll be accessible there?
We'll be accessible, yes. Okay, the next item, please.
Next item is the consent items, including minutes, following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the minutes?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Excuse me, the entire consent calendar.
Second.
I have no request to pull any item. Let's take roll call.
Councilmembers, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Sonian? Mayor Protem Najarian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item, item five. Council and staff comments.
Ms. Friedman?
A couple of things. It was a busy week in Glendale. Like many of you, I attended the first candidate forum for the City Council race. I'm not a candidate, but I love to watch candidate forums, especially if I'm not having to participate. It was hosted by the Royal Canyon Homeowners Association. It was a very well-done event, so I congratulate them and all of the candidates. And I am using this announcement to remind people that there is a municipal election coming up in April. You have plenty of time to get to know the issues and the candidates for all of the various races. It's very important to be aware and to vote. I assume if you're watching us right now, you're pretty aware and probably the type of person who votes, but your neighbors may not be and your friends may not be. So please, let everybody know that there's an election coming up and to get themselves educated and to turn out to vote. Secondly, I also attended a meeting that was held in northwest Glendale, not by the city, but by Verizon Wireless, about a proposed cell tower installation at Grandview Cemetery. There were a lot of people there, there were a lot of concerns addressed, and there were really a lot of people who were for the tower and a lot of people that were against the tower. It seemed to be pretty evenly divided, but there was a very spirited debate. And I'm just happy to be in a city that, at this point, does have ordinances that govern these sorts of cellular installations. We didn't have them several years ago. We have them now. We have a process, and this was evidence that that process is working, in that we have a forum to have public input, we have controls over design, we have some controls over placement. So it's interesting to see all of that play out after putting these relatively new guidelines into effect. Last night, lastly, I attended a meeting with Ms. Devine about the Shoal Canyon landfill that was hosted by the Shoal Canyon, I believe, Homeowners Association, or maybe it was a group that they have that's called GOTCHA, that's...
Blenox Board, I think.
Blenox Board. So I wanted to thank them for inviting us to be there and participate, and there were a lot of things discussed, but one thing that I got out of it that I would like to ask the city to look into is, there is some concern from some of the residents in the area about potential contamination from years of the landfill being up there and from things that were dumped way back in the '60s and the '70s, before we have the tight regulations that we have now. I would like us to do two things. First, I know that there is testing done of various wells in the area. There was a concern that not all of the wells were being tested, so I'd like the city to take a look at what's being tested, to report back to us and to the neighborhood up there about what testing is being done and whether we need to do more testing of the wells. I'd also like us to do some spot testing of soil and water in the area, maybe at our public parks, because it's probably the easiest thing and maybe closest to the landfill, to make sure that the soil and the water in the area is within EPA standards for what's considered to be safe. So if we can do some testing, you know, in various places in the area, I think it would go a long way in reassuring the people who live there, or if there are problems, I'd like to know if there are problems, so that we can do what we need to do to make sure that we have a safe environment for our community.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Weaver?
Everything there is tested by EPA standards, and we meet all the standards. We have had no violations in years. We're lucky if we have one a year. And I've lived there over 75 years in that canyon, and that landfill is perfectly safe, despite of what anybody says. I used to hike up on those hills where the landfill is when I started. I have not got cancer, deranged, or anything else from there. Anything like that that's put out are simply rumors, and I will continue to say that. I'm only one here and in that canyon, probably, that can speak on that, because I've lived there longer than virtually anyone in that canyon. Raised my kids there. It's a safe landfill site. Thank you.
You do get cranky at times. I'm just saying. I'm just saying. Not all the time.
Well, I'm trying to get over a cold, and it's been lingering five, six days, so I apologize for being cranky.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Devine?
Just, so it's not redundant, I attended all three of the events that Councilmember Friedman did, including the forum. Thank you.
Okay. And, did I cut you off, Mr. Weaver? Or did you have anything else?
Oh, no, no, I made my point.
Okay. Thank you, and I will have nothing to add. We do have some requests from staff members. Let's see. Will the staff members who submitted cards, please come forward?
Laura Martinulich, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, and for those following at home, this is a community event announcement version, or you're doing staff announcements version?
Hi, good evening. Mayor Protem Najarian, council members, City Council and guests. My name is Laura Martinulich. I'm the Adult Public Services Manager at the Glendale Library Arts and Culture Department. This year marks the eighth annual One Book, One Glendale Community Reading Event. On Tuesday, March 31st, Arthur Garthstein visits the Central Library to talk about his bestselling novel, The Art of Racing in the Rain. Told from the viewpoint of Enzo, the family golden retriever, this book tells the story of professional race car driver and widower Denny Swift and his daughter Zoe. If Enzo succeeds in keeping Denny and Zoe together, good things await him in his next life. Throughout March, we will also be hosting additional events celebrating the human canine bond. Bring your well-behaved dog or cat to our photo booth, then receive one keepsake photo for use during emergencies. Adopt a shelter dog or cat through the Pasadena Humane Society's mobile unit. Discover the use of dogs in search and rescue work from a handler dog team. Meet a Glendale Police Department canine team and learn more about dogs with jobs. And finally, meet Karen Saunders and her therapy dog, Kavatch, who's with me now. On Sunday, March 15th, they and other therapy dog teams will be at the library to tell you how you and your dog can become certified to do therapy work at hospitals and other local agencies. Karen is a long-term board member of the Hollywood Dog Obedience Club, and Karen and Kavatch are also Glendale residents. Kavatch, sit.
I have raised and trained four therapy dogs. Kavatch is seven years old. She has been a therapy dog for six years. They cannot even be tested until they're at least a year old. She was tested at 13 months and passed, which I'm very proud of. She is my pet. I share her with others as a therapy dog, which is different than a service dog that assists a person to do something they cannot do for themselves. Kavatch visits USC Verdigo Hills Hospital, Glendale Adventist Hospital, Hathaway Sycamores in Altadena, Occidental College, and College View, the School for Special Needs Children, on a regular basis. She visits other venues on a one-time basis, nursing homes, women's clubs, and in December, she was a guest at a formal Christmas party of 500, hosted by USC Keck Hospitals. Medical research has proven that therapy animals lower blood pressure, cholesterol, they reduce pain, calm patients, and often inspire them to physically challenge themselves to visit with the dogs. In some of the places I visit, my dog provides unconditional love to children who have never experienced love before. Any dog can be a therapy dog. They can be purebred, they can be mixed breed, they can be big, they can be little. They just have to like people and have a desire to be petted. But before they can be accepted or pass the rigorous tests to be a therapy dog, they need to be trained. In fact, I think every dog should be trained, because when an owner invests the time to train a dog, they bond with the dog. The dog bonds with them. The dog becomes a fun companion to take places, and after that bonding, that dog rarely winds up, I'm boring her, in an animal shelter. And when you know the problems we have with animal shelters, it'd be nice if we had less animals there. After a dog has been trained to walk calmly on a leash, heel, sit, stay, and come when called, then they can begin the advanced training needed to become a therapy dog, working on a flat collar with no leash corrections, walking over food on the ground or the floor without touching it, going up to a stranger and feeling comfortable and confident, and working around distractions like loud noises, wheelchairs, walkers, and other dogs. When a dog has mastered all that, they can be tested by one of the more than 100 therapy dog groups around the country, so they're registered as a therapy dog and insured by that group. Want to learn more? Then come to the Glendale Central Library on March 15th at 2:00, and meet a group of hard-working, amazing therapy dogs who work for pets and praise. Kavatch?
Wake up.
So just in closing, please join us in March as the library goes to the dogs. Learn more about these and other exciting programs by visiting us at www.glandalepubliclibrary.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Weaver?
I could add, I got my beloved Sammy from Pasadena Humane, and she passed on a year or so ago, he passed on a year or so ago. My granddaughter, who will turn seven on April Fool's Day, has said, "I am to buy Sammy too." Have to keep it at our house, take care of him, feed him, take him to the shelters, or the veterinarian, whatever, and when she has time, she'll come down, visit her dog at our house. So I got my marching orders.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other staff comments? Mr. Kosakian?
Mr. Mayor Protem, if I may, just a quick announcement that Thursday, March 12th, 2015, if at 6:30 a.m. in the morning you find yourself bored with nothing to do, Glendale Mayor's Prayer Breakfast Committee is holding its 52nd Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. It's going to be quite a program, because we have a very special guest. In fact, such an important person that even a Bruin like myself will be in attendance to hear the keynote speaker, Pete Arbogast. He is the radio play-by-play voice of the USC Trojans, and an award-winning radio sports announcer and newscaster. He's also a member of the Hall of Fame of Southern California Sports Broadcasters. Again, 6:30 a.m. on March 12th, 2015, breakfast is at 7:00 a.m. program. Doors will be open at 6:00 a.m., and we'll have a number of musical performances. Charles Lane, tenor of the member of the Los Angeles Master Chorale, Rosemont Middle School String Ensemble, and Aaron Shaw on the Bagpipes. And if you're still sleepy after you've arrived, nothing wakes you up at 6:30 a.m. like Bagpipes. If you want to buy tickets, you can do so at the Montrose Verdigo Chamber of Commerce, or call the number that is, I believe, on the screen, or should be. Otherwise, for more information, you can call 626-720-1088, or 818-249-7177.
And Artie, you better make sure I meet him.
Absolutely.
Because I've listened to him religiously for years and years, and on Sunday, he's a guy famous for "How Do You Do?"
Many people know him, and they do recognize him for his "How Do You Do?" catchphrase, yes. And we're hoping that a lot of folks will come out to hear him talk. Thank you.
Thank you. After no other staff comments, let's move to the next item.
Next item is community event announcements, three-minute order.
Okay. I have a card from Relinda Biesmeyer, followed by Bill Weisman.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, I have spoken to you at least nine times, I think, in reference to the Glendale Youth Orchestra, but waiting for my announcement to come up, because I usually talk too fast. And so, you know, I can only tell you, I'm very glad that you changed the order of the meetings where the public, we get to talk sooner, rather than waiting until the end of, you know, the meetings. So, goodness.
Is this photo part of it?
Oh, that's a part of it, but it's like my poster's not there. Oh, okay. So this will be our 21st season for the Glendale Youth Orchestra, and as you know, we are a premier L.A. Philharmonic Youth Orchestra mentorship partner. And we perform at the Alex Theater, and so our concert is March 8th. It's a Sunday at 7:00 p.m. And our last concert is May 17th, which is another Sunday. I will be coming for the next two meetings of the City Council, just to keep people informed and aware, because, you know, you can't start too early, really. And so basically, we'll be having a Mozart, Grieg, and Beethoven symphonies, and you will enjoy it. At our Christmas concert, we had one of our largest audiences, and so we're hoping to do as well. March is always kind of slow, but still, we hope that you'll try to attend, or try to have family members come, and that you are missing something if you don't come. But thank you very much, and, you know, I always say, you know, parking is best at the Orange Street Garage, and it's validated to where you only pay $1, okay? So thank you very much, and I look forward to your attendance at our concert on March 8th. Thank you.
You?
Just a very brief preamble before I get started. I graduated high school in 1971. John Marshall, class of summer '71. Pete Arbogast was class of '72, so he was a junior when I was a senior, but just by way of saying what a small world it is. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, Protem, council members, city staff and the public. My name is Bill Weisman. I'm here tonight as a member of Glendale Beautiful to invite you to join us for our annual Arbor Day event, which is going to be held Tuesday, March 3rd, 10:00 a.m. to noon, at one of Glendale's two historic adobes, the Casa Adobe de San Rafael, which is located at 1330 Dorothy Drive in Glendale. We would also like to encourage people not only to attend the annual observance of Arbor Day, but to help participate in the planting of trees to beautify our city. There's no nicer tribute than to donate a tree in recognition of a special person, and trees make lasting memorials. For $45, a tree in a 15-gallon can can be purchased, and larger specimen trees are available on request at additional prices. The trees will be planted in local parks and library areas, and the city does make an effort, actually, when people donate trees, to plant them close to where the donator lives. Sharon and I have been donating trees to this program for, I think, about five years now, and most of them are in Dunsmore Park, which is the park closest to where we live. But we also have trees in Duke Magian Park, in Nibley Park, and at the Glendale Sports Complex. And last year, Glendale celebrated 30 years as a Tree City USA, and we have a very extensive urban forest, and the people of this city should be justifiably proud of that urban forest. Since this program has been in existence, over 7,000 trees have been donated to the city of Glendale. If anyone has any questions regarding the event, and again, it's Tuesday, March 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. till noon, they can email the Glendale Beautiful president, Roberta Medford. Her email address is rmedford@UCLA.edu, or you can call her at 818-248-8151. And the tree donation forms are also available on the city's website, and if you do make a donation, you will not only have a photo op to pose next to your tree after it has been planted in the park where it's placed, but you'll also be given a beautiful certificate in memory of or in honor of who or what you're planting the tree for. So we'd like if everyone can come by, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any questions.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Any questions, Bill? Thank you. Great event, or a great cause. I don't have any other cards for community announcements, so let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor Protem, next item under eight action items. A. A. is Director of Community Development Regarding Code Compliance Policy for Unpermitted Window Installations. A. A. 1 is a motion approving recommended policy. B. is Director of Community Development Regarding Window Replacement Design Review Process. B. 1 is a resolution adopting the guidelines.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. At the request of the mayor, we are asking that you continue this item until March the 3rd, and we would take this up in your regular City Council meeting at that time, and just hold these two items over for tonight.
Okay. Are there any objections by council?
No, I just want to make a comment, because I'm the one that asked for this item to be brought back to the City Council, and I'm very upset. Emails I'm getting, a handful of emails I'm getting, all state the word weaken. How can you weaken the ordinance? I never said that. None of us ever said that. We're trying to strengthen and streamline the ordinance, not weaken it. So if anybody else is going to send emails between now and March the 3rd or whatever, please, don't put the word weaken in, because that is not the intent. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to continue these? Okay, if there's no objections by my colleagues, we will continue both of these items to the regularly scheduled meeting of March 3rd. The next item, please.
C. is Director of Finance Regarding Fiscal Year 2014-15 Second Quarter Financial Update and Discussion on Certain Fees. C. 1 is a motion to note and file. C. 2 is a resolution appropriating $797,008. 3 is a motion authorizing to execute an amendment with all city management in an amount up to $30,000 for crossing guards at three locations within the city. 4 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing to execute an amendment with Alpha and Omega Group in an amount up to $40,000 for security services. 5 is a resolution amending fiscal year 2014-15 citywide fee schedule to adopt and incorporate revised fees for community development services.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. After a number of years, after six years of the doldrums of the Great Recession, we are starting to feel the positive impacts of the tough cuts that this City Council has authorized and been endured by the community, and certainly by the men and women of the city of Glendale. So rather than have me run through our typical mid-year report, I think it's only fair and right that one of the people that has worked as hard as anyone else to get us to this point where we can see more than the light at the end of the tunnel, but the bright, shining horizon before us, I'll have our Director of Admin Services, Mr. Bob Elliott, take you through the mid-year report, answer some questions that you may have, and also outline the opportunity that we may have now, with your permission and indulgence, to increase funding in a handful of key areas. So with that, turn it over to Bob.
Your mic, please.
Yeah. The time of the year where we present our mid-year update, so I'll walk you through, as we always do, where we are in the general fund and our results of the first six months and our projected fund balance as we go forward. I'll quickly go through the organizational profile numbers. You've seen these every quarter, as we go through those. In addition, this time, we're going to have a little discussion on some fees that came to council's attention, so we'll offer those up for some consideration, and then we'll have questions and comments. So moving right into the general fund, as you can see, the percentages in the different categories that we have on our revenues that we have received, our revenues are trending very nicely. We're up in total of about 9.3% over last year. We've received $56.1 million in the general fund, about $5 million more than we have this time last year. You can see, we're recommending some adjustments in the different categories, property tax and sales tax, because there are increases in those categories. Some of the other ones are one-time bumps for licenses and permits, and we're recommending to increase those estimates as well. However, we won't factor those in into our forecast, because we believe those, for the most part, are not recurring. So overall, the revenue estimates are very strong and positive. Turning to the expenditure side, it's a little bit different this year. As you recall, we front-loaded the costs this year in all the departments of the retirement incentive. Even with that, there's a couple departments that are slightly over 50%. Obviously, on a straight-line basis, we would expect everybody to be 50% or lower. We still expect that we will have all the departments at or below their budget as of year-end. In fact, we're actually estimating that we'll have some savings with that. Our percent, again, is we're slightly under 50% at 49.8. We're a little ahead of last year, but again, I think that was from the retirement incentives that we front-loaded during the year. As we do, we try and give you a forecast of where we think we'll end up the year with our fund balance, as you recall. When we closed out last year, 1314, we had a fund balance percentage of 37.9% or $66 million. In the new budget that we adopted this year in 1415, we appropriated $7 million, $2 million for the data center from the general fund, and $5 million for the central library. We also had an expected use of fund balance of $495,000. As we move forward, we've had some adjustments and carryovers. I mentioned the revenue adjustments earlier, about $4.2 million. We're also projecting departmental savings of about $2.7 million, given the trends that we're seeing in the expenditures. All said and done, we would expect that to be 4.5, and then some pending adjustments before you tonight are about $425,000. before you tonight are about $425,000, and I'll walk you through those in a minute. But by department, it's $129,000 for Public Works, $256,000 for Community Services and Parks, and $40,000 for the Police Department.
Let me just interrupt you and just highlight what I think is the key figure. Currently, you believe we're at 4.5, 4.6 million in the positive.
Given the revenue adjustments and our savings, yes.
And then below that, our items that we're going to be discussing later on today. These are going to be funding enhancements to different programs that we have, and those are $425,000.
Correct.
So we're not shooting the hole.
So our use of fund balance at the beginning of the year was 7.5 million, $7,495,000. That has since reduced, even with the additional appropriations, but with the savings and revenue increases, we're projecting only to have a $3.3 million use of fund balance, which is a drastic improvement from where we started the year. That said, we would end the year about 35.9% reserve, which is still above our target of 35%.
And well above the charter mandate of 30%.
So the budget adjustments that I mentioned, by fund type, in the general fund, there's In the enterprise funds, about $15,000. The special revenue funds have a reduction of $62,882, and the internal service funds, $250,000. And I will, I will mention, too, as we went through and fine-tuned this, we actually changed the budget adjustment from what's in the report. It's now $782,000. I think we had $797 originally in the report, so that there is a revised resolution to reflect that. So getting into the details, Community Services and Parks is requesting an additional $150,000 for utility bills for their park expenses, $16,000 to start a after-school sports and recreation program. The $15,000 is really just some housekeeping and moving some positions around. $40,000 is to retain an existing or security patrol service that we have to patrol the parks at night and lock up the parks, since we've had some vandalism of late. So this is a trial period with a patrol, security patrol. And lastly, for Community Services and Parks, is a $50,000 seed money for the Rose Float if we choose to move in that direction. Within the Police Department, there is $40,000 is requested for additional bike patrols. Public Works is $62,000. That's just shifting part of the Public Works Director. Another $30,000 within Public Works for additional crossing guards, and $36,000 for the high-visibility crosswalks. I think it's for an additional six intersections.
Can I ask a question? The crossing guards are $30,000. I'm assuming that's near our schools, correct?
Yes. And the last adjustment is a $250,000 appropriation. Information Systems is ahead of their PC replacement this year, which is a good thing, so they're asking for additional appropriation to continue that cycle. As we do every quarter, we show you-
I'm sorry, just to hold on for one thing, just to reemphasize, if you go back to that slide and the previous slide, the, it needs to be underscored, the $16,000 for the after-school sports program is an outcropping of one of our Glendale Innovation Team ideas of bringing back not just the after-school sports programmer and after-school sports program, but speaks to the notion of collaboration between the city and the school district, to the extent that we are constantly trying to find ways to create open space, facilitate open space in central and southern Glendale. It seems the most cost-effective way to do this was to collaborate with Glendale Unified to allow us to go onto those school campuses for these programs after school and even on weekends as the program matures. We can increase the amount of publicly accessible open space for next-to-no dollars, and at the same time, be able to provide some constructive wellness activities for, for school-age kids at four different campuses in the central part and the southern part of the city. This first $16,000 allows Jess's team to bring the program into alignment, to make sure it's ready to go, so by the time we hit August and school starts up again, we are moving forward with a low-cost, very inclusive pilot program, again, at four schools, Cerritos, I believe Roosevelt, Marshall, and help me out, Jess, what was the other one?
Mann and Edison.
Mann and Edison, I'm sorry, not Roosevelt, Mann and Edison. So a very exciting program, and really a feature of the council's direction to collaborate more and use existing assets. The unarmed security really is a function of our desire to use the outside contract labor where it's appropriate, where it makes sense, and in this case, closing down our parks at the end of the night versus having to roll staff back out there with our own vehicles and also be able to provide some security. Council has talked already about the seed funding for the Rose Float, and if you go to the next one, to the extent council sets the tone, you have told us in very clear terms that pedestrian safety and trying to abate, further abate traffic collisions with pedestrians is critically important to you. One of the ways that's been proven by our data is bicycle patrols, doing additional engineering at those locations, and in reflection of the very loud outcry from the, again, the collaboration between the city and the schools, and the PTAs trying to bring more crossing guards to Glendale school sites. There is a very clear demarcation point between the next three or four locations around our schools, and then the rest, that would be nice to have crossing guards at, but three or four that we really would like to place crossing guards at, based on the input from the PTAs, and this will allow us to do that if it's approved. So something council has articulated, we are providing it to you, and again, we collaborate with our partners at the school district where possible to offset cost.
Moving right along, as we show you every six months, our cash balances by fund type with some highlighted areas. Most notably, we've focused a lot on the utility cash. The electric fund is doing very well, and you can see we still have about $55 million in bond proceeds. Likewise, in the water fund, we still have about $19 million in bond proceeds. However, our operating cash, which was $12.5 million at the first quarter, has slipped to $14.5 million negative cash, and I think that's a sign of the slowdown in water sales due to the water restrictions and stage two, and so on, and so forth. Overall, our cash balance is almost the same, it's $489 million. We were $488 million at the first quarter. Briefly going through the organizational profile, we show you these numbers every quarter. The trend is positive, and I will, I will highlight a few of the variances as we go through. You'll note on the total city employees, we started 1314 budget year with 1,588 total employees. We adopted this year at 1,584, and I'll, there's a note down here that post the retirement incentive, we're down to 1,512, so another 72 has dropped from our employee count. The residents served has gone up per FTE, which is a good thing, and so on and so forth, with the total budget per capita is actually higher now, because we do have a lower employee count.
And in getting the lower employee count, as you look at the report that's provided to you, where we provide the update on key performance indicators, you're seeing our deliverables are at least the same, if not better, utilizing new technology, streamlined process, greater responsibility for staff members to exercise their discretion reasonably. So we are getting that much more efficiency and effectiveness out of each employee for each marginal dollar spent. It's very good stuff for this organization.
Continuing on the organizational profile within our major categories, public safety, the expenditures, they're approximately the same, a little bit difference in some of our COPs money. The Public Works Utility and Transit, the large increase there is primarily the GWP bond money that we have appropriated for that. And within the quality of life, that includes the library, that's the funding that we've added for the central library project. And with the administration Internal Service, the primary large increase here is the data center and some of the increases in our internal service funds for workers' compensation and medical. Overall, you can see the total operational expenditures has increased, again, primarily that's from the bond proceeds and appropriation there.
Again, you're not letting money just sit in the treasury, money that's supposed to be used for infrastructure. City council has approved the projects to put it out there on the street to be used for infrastructure, to the benefit of the community.
Looking at our personnel appropriations, you can see the total city salaries and benefits, it's actually decreased. We would expect that with a reduction in staffing levels. And the goal of 35% down here for personnel versus operating costs has trended downward from the last several years, where we're showing 35.4. We're now down to 32.4. Our target is 35 or below, which we are exceeding. Again, if you look at the number of employees where we were in 1112, we've dropped 361 full-time employees down to the 1512. Looking at the four-year comparison, just in the general fund area, you can see, again, the trends are all positive. The one key indicator here, while it's improving, we haven't quite hit the 75% mark in personnel versus M&amp;O within the general fund. Our target, again, is 75%, and from where we were originally at 85, we still have been improving, but not quite there at 75%. Looking at the total personnel in all funds, again, that's, the trend is down, and because the employee count has been reduced. That said, our target of 25% in the management and salary ratio has continuously declined, and we're down to 19.3 there, which is where we want to be. So with that, if we have any questions, if not, I will invite Armin Harkalyan up for discussion on fees that have come to our attention, the news rack fees and the kennel application fees, and walk you through the data we have and where any options that the council may have in reducing those fees.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the city council. Per council direction, staff is bringing the news rack fees and the kennel application permit fees for council consideration and further discussion. As you recall, last year, we hired Wolford Consulting Services to conduct the citywide fee study, and from the fee study, we've identified about 93 new fees, 297 fee increases, 51 fee decreases, and we've also met with other departments that were not part of the fee study. Those departments were libraries, community services and parks, Glendale Water and Power, and based on staff discussions, we recommended 19 new fees, 69 increases, and 185 CPI adjustments. About 1,400 of those fees had no changes. As part of the fee study, one of the first things we do is to identify the fully burdened hourly rate, and in those hourly rates includes the salaries benefits, the cost allocation, ISD charges, and the fleet, fleet charges. So based on that fully burdened hourly rate, then we meet with the departments and we go over the time estimates for each fee identified. So with that, for the news rack fees, we, our true cost was $241.75.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
And maybe this, I mean, kind of goes without saying, but I'm assuming that you believe that that's the cheapest we can get away with doing it, that we can't be more efficient in how we do the inspections, we can't, do we have to inspect all of them, can we do them all in one day, or, I don't know how many, I'm assuming you don't get that many new applications.
That's a fair question.
So bottom line, does it have to cost us that much? Does it have to take that much staff time?
That's what it has to cost us today, based on the process that exists, but your point is very well taken. And I think what you'll see, and what you have seen in other fee reductions, is that technology may be able to allow us to do things more quickly, or with having employees place less time, or, you know, touch a process less, or if we're able to streamline, instead of having more layers of review, a lower-level decision-maker can make something happen.
I think maybe that's a way to approach this fee, and maybe rather than dealing with it this minute, you can go back and look at your process and say, does it really have to take that much staff time?
And certainly, that can be something that we do prospectively, but the fee study, and I hear you, and I don't disagree at all, but the fee study is basically a snapshot in time.
I understand that.
That as we are, so if what the council is directing, you can direct two things. One would be to not charge the full cost recovery, and also to provide the direction such as you are with the concurrence of council, to say, well, maybe staff, you need to be looking at different ways to make this take less time.
Well, since this is private, I'm more inclined to leave it to be, to not subsidize a commercial operation, but I would be willing to direct staff to take a real look at this right now, spend a few hours of staff time, and see if we can find a way to bring the fee down by expediting the process somehow. And that leads me to, and maybe that's something we can discuss at the end of this, and that leads me just to another question, and maybe it's a question for the end, but I'll ask it now and you can answer it later.
Okay.
Maybe it's even a question for Mr. Ochoa, which is, let's say we start, you know, as we bring more of our fee permitting online, how do we revisit fees that are based on staff time if we knowingly are reducing the staff time it takes to implement whatever it is that fee is for? Do we wait until we do another fee study, or if all of a sudden we change a process and something that we knew before took four hours of staff time now takes one hour, do we just, do you just bring that change to us at that point?
Couple of different ways. One, the failsafe is the regular and ongoing fee study that we would do every several years, but truly, all of your departments are charged with the task of looking at their operations, not just at budget time, but all year long. Now, I'll give you a great example tonight, and then we'll continue it over to the March 3rd meeting, is this discussion on design review for windows. And we have a fee, a series of fees, based on what our cost is to, to execute the current process for the replacement of those windows. If the council were to say that they're going to change their priority on that level of service, well, then we could ratchet down what the cost is. If the, the cost for the inspection on the news racks covers damage, graffiti, wear and tear to make sure that they're operable and not a blight on the street, if that has less importance and we don't do that inspection, that obviously has an impact here.
Okay, so without getting into the weeds on it, my point is just that, if we, as we find ways to be more efficient as an organization, I want to be sure that our fees reflect that, and that we don't basically overcharge people based on being more inefficient in the past. I want to make sure that our fees go down or reflect whatever it actually takes us to administer. So that's all. We don't have to have a big discussion about it now, but I, that's just a comment.
If I may add very quickly, we do review all the fees every year during the budget process, and we do look at those and reduce fees if necessary because of technology and other items, and bearing in mind that they're all subject to 218, so we can't charge more than our actual costs, so.
Terrific. Thank you.
Mr. Weaver.
Question, do we have records of past years, going back, of how many racks we had in the city? Because if you reduce the racks, it would seem, there would be more racks out there. I seem to remember in the old days, 15 years ago, there were a lot more on the street. So wondering if you have, if we know any of that kind of information.
We'll check with the department, but for the, the fee study, we've identified about 550 news racks for last year when we did the study, but we'll check with the department and see if there's a history.
Yeah, was that before, before or after the news press stopped putting their newspapers? Did you take up all of those racks when they decided to go indoors?
A couple of things, speaking to both of your points, the industry has a great deal to do with that, and to the extent that the newspapers would place their, their papers inside of a store and the news racks don't become necessary, they sit fallacy that they can become lights. We do take into account, we try to take into account, their respective operations, but in the case if we have a paper that goes out and they decide, based on their own business model, that they're going to print more, or they're going to print less, or they're going to put them in stores or not, they're going to charge or not, we really can't keep up with that and hold our fee structure around what they elect to do as a private business. So we use what exists during the snapshot to say, this is the circumstances as we know it, and gauge from there how best to calculate our time. So kinda, I guess, is the answer, but at the same time, as, as Mr. Weaver indicates, you're seeing more and more being done online, relatively fewer and fewer being out there on hard copy, and when there is that degree of inconsistency, occasionally, you see these racks fall into disre- disrepair. I don't mind telling you that the downtown was, the removal of racks from the downtown, and the city attorney can speak to the process that's involved for the removal of such racks, was something that the downtown Glendale Association wanted to see. Because ultimately, they were graffiti, they were in disrepair, and they wanted to see those removed as well. So there's a balance here. Do you make it less expensive and thus easier for folks to install the racks? Or do you adhere to whatever the cost is, whatever is freedom indicates? Do you streamline the cost as best you can, but still charge the full cost? Those are the policy issues that you all get to wrestle with in setting what that cost is.
Okay.
Here we have the adopted fees of $241 compared to last year, which was $52. And again, based on the annual volume of 550, we estimated about $104,000 in revenue increase. I believe a couple of weeks ago, somebody circulated a survey from surrounding or other municipalities charging for news rack fees. We reviewed those fees, and we felt that it's, you know, there were some additional fees, what was presented to you. And we also felt that it was worth noting that some cities actually do charge business license tax on top of the permits and inspection fees. Here, since we went full cost recovery for the $241, we wanted to have options for city council consideration, whether you wanted to recover 75% of the total cost, or recover 50%, 25%, or not recover at all. The kennel permit and application fee?
I'm sorry, Armin, just to make sure, does the council have any questions right now or direction? Or do you want to wait till we get through the rest of the fee discussion?
About this?
About the news rack.
Well, just.
Let's also have a question.
Yeah, you might have public comments, so I'm not sure before you give any direction.
Okay.
We hear it from the speakers.
I just want to make a comment, though, if that's okay. From what I'm reading here, we're actually not the most expensive for news racks. I mean, this is very different than the information we were presented by the gentleman who came here. I mean, Beverly Hills is almost $500, plus a $30 annual inspection, and then a $60 annual permit renewal.
That's correct.
So that makes us almost, them almost twice as expensive as us. Santa Monica, 356, plus 108 annual renewal, and 85 for each additional one annually. So this is very different than what we were shown before. And it makes me feel a little better about our fee.
And this information is actually on their website. So anybody wants to check it out, they could go to their website directly. For the kennel application and permit fee, again, we've identified the fully burdened hourly rates here, and with each position. And then we've identified how much time it takes staff to process the application and the permit fee. I want to point out that these are combined fees for both application and permit fee. And altogether, it came out to $229.64 as a full cost. Here, on this slide, actually, we were trying to show that last year, the fees for the application and the kennel permit were separate fees. So application, we used to charge 102, kennel permit was $51. When we finalized the fee study, we actually had application fee of $97, and then 132 for the permit fee. Then, after finalizing the fee study, staff recommended to combine those fees. And actually, in most cases with licenses and permits, since we charged those fees annually, it was, it actually made sense to combine them. But in this case, we made an error, and we're recommending that with council approval, we actually separate those fees again. So where we could charge $97 application fee, and then $132 the permit fee.
So in other words, I believe that the count is that in 75, 75 cases, we have charged $97 plus the tech surcharge in error, a little over $100, that we will refund to 75 different permittees. And to correct the problem, as Armin indicates, break those fees apart again. Because when somebody is just getting a renewal, they don't necessarily need to go through the application rigmarole, and we would charge them again. So that was something that we, as staff, should not have done.
So if you have two dogs, you don't need a kennel permit?
You need to pull a permit, but you only pay the application fee once.
And if you have three dogs, then you have to have a kennel permit.
That's, that's correct.
Because I did. I had three collie dogs. So if you were to change it to four dogs to get a kennel permit, you might be adopting more dogs out from the shelters at the sacrifice of not too much money.
Yes, sir. Your decision as a policymaker exists on a couple of different planes, whether or not to recover the fully burdened cost, and then separately, how to apply that cost. Is it three dogs as it is now? Or in other cities, you don't require a kennel permit until you get four dogs? And so that's a decision that you, as council, get to make.
Just asking.
What's considered a kennel?
Because I'm not going to get four, or three. Been there, done that.
In conclusion, we're asking for council direction. Again, you could keep the fees for 14, 15 fiscal year as is, or for the news rack, direct staff if you're going to reduce the permit fee. The kennel permit, again, staff is recommending that you separate those fees as they used to be. And I would also like to point out, we also have a situation with our, the arcade devices, where the permit and the application fees were combined, but we're asking council to, with your approval, to separate those fees again. Because the applicants would just pay that one time each year, but for each device, that's a separate fee. If there are any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer. And we also have staff from CDD if there's any specific questions.
Okay, thank you. I think we're going to hear from the public, and then we may come back to you at some questions. I have a card from Don Margolin, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, City Council, no mayor. I just called the LA Weekly. They pay zero, nothing, to Beverly Hills, nothing. I don't know where you're getting the information from, but we have never paid from the LA Weekly to Beverly Hills anything. And when we call Beverly Hills, they'd only return our phone calls to the LA Weekly. So something is wrong. Going to fees from the past, as the handout I gave you, 2008 and 2009 were $10. Then it was looked at, and 10 and 11, it was $15. Then in 2012, it went to $68. Well, I brought it up to the attention of Sam Engel, that was, used to be here, and he cut it in half to $34. 2013, it went to $51. 2014, it went to $52. Now it's $241. Big difference than it was. They call me the rack master, because it's my responsibility to see that there's no graffiti on the news racks, and if they're in bad condition, they're replaced. And I do it. If I get a message from Philippe, I take care of it. Or it's in writing normally, and they gave us so many days to either take care of it, or the rack we picked up. That's been the policy. It isn't the city's responsibility to take care of these news racks. It's our responsibility. And if a paper doesn't take care of them, the news rack is abated. It's not allowed to stay on the street. The problem is, when newspapers go out of business, they do sometimes leave their news racks. But in the case of the LA Weekly or the Pasadena Weekly, we take care of them. And when the Glendale News Press took away the news racks from me, they picked them all up. And I did have Glendale News Press for 34 years as the single copy sales manager. So the 241 should really be looked at. It's hard to believe that the city spends that much money looking at news racks, when all they have to do is notify the distributors or the publishers that they want to take care of, and we'll do it. That's it. Thank you.
Am I asked half a question?
Thank you. Sure, let.
Just because I'm thinking of it, and I know it's public comments, but do we charge them the fee if, no, it's not for you. Sorry. It's about something you said, though. If they have a graffiti problem and they're going to swap out, do they have to get another permit for that?
You know, I don't know the answer to that. No, is what I'm being told.
Sure about that? Why don't we, okay. And then he mentioned that a city employee cut the fee in half when he was, when he complained about it?
That I could not speak to. I can't imagine that that could occur or would occur because council sets the fee schedule. That would be in violation of everything that we do.
Yeah, fee resolution.
So I don't know that. I suppose we can look into it, but by.
Just curious if our employees have the ability to do that.
Not by fiat, certainly, ma'am.
Do they, do you know that LA Weekly does that, takes care of those racks? Or do all of them do that?
I think that there probably is a differing view of the condition of a number of these racks. If you would like additional information, kind of boots on the ground, I'd call up either Mr. Agani, or Mr. Brownell, or Mr. Foy. Mr. Brownell oversees the program directly, but it comes under CDD, and they can tell you about some of the issues that they've had in terms of getting compliance. Gentleman's point is right on as well, to the extent that when the papers go out of business, oftentimes, an operation that shuts its doors doesn't have a whole lot of interest in cleaning up what was left behind. And there is a problem with that. And it is a relatively sensitive issue, because the removal of those racks is not something that we can do with impunity. So to the extent that there is a process that draws out a legacy cost, if you will, that really is also a function of looking at this particular matter.
Can I have another card from Mike Mohill?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, councilmen, Nigerian council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I think it's time we have a fairness fee when it comes to people who ride bicycles in the city. Every day, we read about accidents with bicycle riders and car accidents. There's no, like a car, there's no training, there's no manual to read. You just get your bike and you just start riding.
Mr. Mayor, what do bicycles have to do with?
We're talking about fees. We're going to talk about fees now.
No, we're talking about.
Talking about, you wanted, you're talking about fees, and I'm talking about a fee.
Just a moment, just a moment. To the extent that, Ms. Weaver, to the extent that he's advocating for the inclusion of additional fee, which we haven't yet considered, I think it would be germane. Is that it?
I would agree with that. You got to err on the side of caution until he goes.
This is license and bicycles, testing and licensing and.
I, Mr. Weaver, I think we're better off just letting Mr. Mohill make his point and move forward.
Okay.
So let's give back those few moments of interruption and continue, Mr. Mohill.
I think we just read where you're now having Glendale Police Department pay about $40,000, I think I heard the number, to monitor the bicycle problems we have in downtown Glendale. The number was $40,000, I think it was. Okay, some type of a fee that the, and what, the point is recovery, always talking about recovery fees, you know, the rack fee, you get a permit, everything's fees. But for some reason, the people who ride bicycles get a free ride. We spend millions of dollars to put those lines on the streets. Who covers that cost? It's the general public. If you ride a motorcycle, you ride a car, you pay a fee, take a license, take a test. There's no testing to ride a bicycle. I remember once upon a time, when I rode a bike, I had to get a fee, I had to take a license. Why don't we do that? You're trying to encourage more people to ride bicycles within the city, and yet, there's no structure. You just go ahead and buy a bike and go out in the street and cross your fingers that nobody hits the bicycle rider, or the bicycle rider doesn't hit the pedestrian or the car. I think we need some training. And in order to do that training, there ought to be a fee for people who ride the bicycle, take that test, go to the city clerk's office, pay a fee, take a test, just like you do when you go to the DMV. I think it's about time we have a fairness fee, because as a taxpayers, I don't ride a bicycle. God bless those who do ride a bicycle, but I'm paying thousands of dollars, not only with city money, but county tax money, state tax money, federal, we're being taxed all the time, and we don't ride a bicycle. Let the users, we're talking about a user's tax, well, let's charge the bicycle riders a user's tax. It's only fair. Are they a special interest within the city? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. So let me just refocus, if I can, where we are. We have, aside from the news rack fees and the kennel fees, we also have been informed that there's apparently some savings in our budget with a list of 10 or so items that are proposed for the additional funding. So any of those, any of those issues are up for discussion at this point. So is there a discussion about the kennel fee, moving it from, implementing it from three dogs to four dogs?
I thought, you know, I can't prove that you're going to be able to get more dogs out of the pound by going to four. I don't know. Not many people are going to get four dogs, not with neighbors around complaining if they do. So maybe the little chihuahua types, you could put four in a house. But I know what it was like with three collie dogs in a house, a lot of hair and a lot of other things.
I mean, I guess.
Anything higher than three is a kennel.
You know, the issue here, the issue here on the, those fees are, we have gone back and staff has deconstructed how those fees are determined. And for instance, for the news rack fees, it shows that there's staff time of about two hours by a neighborhood services field rep, about a tenth of an hour, or less than a tenth of an hour for a supervisor, actually just a tiny amount, a tiny amount for a customer service rep, and about one hour for a city worker. All those hours, fully costed out, bring us to that $241 figure. Yes?
Mr. Ochoa, it's an advantage to sit next to the city manager, because I can seem kind of smart, because he's whispering things to me sometimes. He made a suggestion that I'll share with you, which is that right now, the fee also entails expecting these racks twice a year. That if we inspect once a year, instead of twice a year, they could reduce staff time and then probably bring the fee down a bit. So we don't know what that number is right now, but what I would maybe instruct is that they go back and look at, first of all, let's make sure there's no issue with doing it that way.
Sure.
And then, if so, we can try it out this year, and let's see how much we can reduce the fee based on doing that.
And can we, can we say that, you know, we have the app now where people can take pictures of, if there's any damage, they can use the app, send it in, and done?
Yes, ma'am. We would be counting on that, quite frankly.
Great.
And I think the downtown area is being monitored and taken care of by the group we have out there. So they'd be, they'd be telling us there was, so that eliminates part of the problem.
That's a happy medium. Let's try that. Let's see how much we can reduce it based on that. And let's take a look and see if we can bring that fee down even more by building some efficiencies in. In terms of the dogs, I'm glad to hear, actually, I mean, I hate to hear that we made a mistake and overcharged people, but on the other hand, I'm glad that people who were hit with this and complaining are now going to be getting a $100.
A little over $100.
A little over $100 refund. So I know that's going to mean a lot to those people. I do think, though, that we should maybe move it up to four instead of three dogs.
The only question I would have, do we know how many kennel permits? Well, of course we would. How many kennel permits we're issuing a year? Is it a big number or a small number? I'd be wanting to bet it's small.
They just said about 79, based on the four dogs.
That's nothing out of the size of city we have.
We issue about 140, 150 per year.
No, sorry.
Per kennel.
You know, on the one side, you want to get more dogs adopted. But on the other side, staff told me you have a lot more problems when you have people having, you know, the more dogs you have, you're kind of, your issues go up exponentially in terms of barking and all of that.
We could always go up and wait until we get the complaints, and then go back down. That's always an option, too.
Why don't we just leave it, given that people are going to be getting over $100 refund, a lot of these people? And I think that that might deal with.
I don't care. Nobody's called me.
I'm not for raising it to four.
Okay, so we'll leave it the way it is. But if you're listening and you're one of those people.
You don't have any.
You got it, yeah.
Right. So if you were overcharged, there's going to be a refund coming to you for those 79, 75 or so. And we'll see if that ultimately soothes some of the pain that you're experiencing with the kennel licensing.
Maybe we should do, if I wait, my 90-pound dog could be like two dogs. And if somebody has four chihuahuas, that only equals maybe 30 pounds.
That $100 saving, go a lot further with the chihuahua dogs and.
Let me just comment just briefly on the rest of the report, which is really a great report to have, that we're doing very well right now, in a lot of our target areas, and reducing personnel, if you think that's a good thing, and our manager to non-manager ratio. ratio. I'm really happy to see that, you know, to show the public that we're putting that money in places that the public has identified to us are the priorities, like traffic safety and parks and recreation. So, I know that that money will go a long way. Three crossing guards, certainly like to do more, or three locations. Is that three guards or three locations?
That's three locations.
Do you, how many guards is that approximately?
I think it depends on the location, but it would be-
Maybe more than three.
It could be four, actually, I believe. Is that right, Rubik, three or four?
Mayor Protem Najarian, council member Friedman, it's usually one, but two at each intersection. For example, South and Virginia will have two. Currently, they have one, we'll add another one.
Well, I've said before that this is something that I'm concerned about, and I'd like to see, as more money gets freed up, that we continue to make this a priority, because even four is not enough, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Devine?
I also am pleased with how we're allotting this money. I've talked to some teachers and educators, and they're very happy that we're using it for the crossing guards, of course, that that's top priority, and also the use of the open space and the recreational staff. I have a question for Mr. Duran, if he would step up. I'm also really happy about the police on bikes, because I think that's the best patrol, and I also think it's going to be favorable to all of our cyclists, because I think, once the motorists in our city start to see more bikers, even though they're police officers, I mean, that's a good thing, but seeing more of them and getting used to driving around with these bicycles in the lanes, I think it'll be a really, a good thing for the whole community. My question to you, Mr. Duran, is a simple one. Some of the educators were asking me, when we provide these programs after school, who, if there's a mess on the premises of the school, will the staff person make sure that the green spaces is clean when they leave? Who's responsible for cleanup, I guess, is the question. That's a concern.
Mayor Protem Najarian, council member Devine, and members of the city council. The sports and recreation programs will be on the school campuses. We will deploy our recreation leaders with some supervision onto the campuses, and that's the idea of expanding the open space. We're actually using the schools. So, we will, our rec leaders will clean up after themselves if there's additional cleanup. I think part of the in-kind support on the part of school district will be that their nighttime maintenance staff will also do some cleanup as necessary.
Okay.
But as it relates to the equipment or trash and debris, that's a direct result of our after-school sports program, we'll clean up after ourselves.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you, thank you very much. So, I'm just really pleased with all of the direction here for using these, the funds.
Okay, would someone like to make a series of motions? Can we move these at the same time?
Can, just a couple, House can be honest, you have a revised motion on 8C2, the resolution appropriation, just a minor modification to that. And then, on 8C5, that includes the news rack fee, Mr. Mayor Protem, so I think rather than a modification to that fee, which is identified in Section 2, Section 2 should include a provision directing staff to recalculate the fee based on one inspection per year, and looking at additional streamlining of the process for purposes of calculating that fee, and then return to the council with revised fee. So, with those two revisions.
So, what are you telling us on one through five?
So, those amendments are adopted in Number 2, the revised 2. Is 5 necessary then, or that's eliminated?
Yeah, 5 includes the revisions to the arcade devices application fee and the kennel permit fees.
Okay, and how can Mr. Weaver make this motion?
How can I make it?
You can make them all with the revisions.
One through five, with revisions as noted?
Correct, by the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Sinanian?
Mayor Protem Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you for your abbreviated report, Mr. Elliott and staff.
Okay, the next item, please.
8D City Manager, Regarding Informational Report Reviewing the City's Public Pension System, Pre- and Post-Public Employee Pension Reform Act of 2013. 8D1, Motion to Note and File.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. The City of Glendale has long led the way on pension and comp reform. It was requested by council to have this matter come back to you for discussion, and as you know, as we do budgets, as we do mid-year budgets, we present lots of different information to you, but as Councilmember Devine had indicated, maybe now is a good time to summarize it all in one place at one time, and thus have the council be able to observe it alongside with the community, and make any statements or any comments as you see fit. With that, I will turn it over to Deputy City Manager John Taktalian, who I have to say has done a yeoman's job of putting together an immense amount of information and organizing it in such a way that I think it is very useful to the public and certainly to the council. So, John?
And I also would like to express my appreciation for Mr. Taktalian's work, his yeoman job, and if we could make this presentation more of a Wikipedia version as opposed to Encyclopedia Britannica version-
It's already been discussed.
-I would appreciate that.
I will do my best to talk as fast as I can.
Obviously, if we have any questions and would like to drill down deeper in any issue, we'll be jumping in and discussing it.
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor Protem Najarian, members of the city council. So, as Scott mentioned at the request of council, we brought forward this comprehensive report. Two-thirds of it really focuses on general pension-related issues, with the last one-third of it really focusing on Glendale's specific implications, both pre and post-PEPRA, the Public Employee Retirement Act of 2013. But in order for us to really get to the end result of that last one-third, we really need to lay a little bit of groundwork here. So, I'll try to speak as fast as I can and go through the important parts, specifically-
Don't go with Ochoa on us, okay?
I will do my best.
Take a breath between, and, because your information is important, and we want to be able to absorb that and note any questions that we may have, with apologies to our esteemed city.
Do you need a glass of water over there?
You're fine.
And it's only 7:20, so.
So, the agenda for tonight's presentation will include a brief historical background on PERS, what it is, who manages it, how does it work, how it worked pre and post-PEPRA, what formulas were available to public agencies, how are the PERS retirement benefits calculated, pension reform in Glendale. We'll talk a little bit about cost sharing, salaries and pension concessions since 2008, additional state mandates from PERS, as well as a piece on OPEB, other post-employment benefits. Then, we'll go ahead and jump into how Glendale compares to other agencies within our region, a little bit about recent negotiations with our different employee associations, and the implications of terminating the PERS plan, as has been suggested a number of times by members of the public. And finally, we'll just round it out with a brief discussion about some of the more notable cities that have been in the news with respect to pension reform there. So, quickly, pension, PERS was established in the 1930s by California voters. It originally applied directly to state employees for pension benefits. It was originally called SIRS, for the State Employees Retirement System, and in 1939, there was a bill adopted by the legislature that opened it up to other agencies. Glendale actually joined PERS in 1945. In 1967, SIRS, as it was known still back then, was contracting with 585 agencies for retirement benefits, and today, they administer health and retirement benefits to more than 3,000 public agencies, 1.6 million members, retired members, and more than 1.3 million health plans. The legal authority under which CALPERS operates is actually embedded in the California Constitution, the California Government Code, as well as the Code of Regulations in California. How's CALPERS administered? There's a number, there's 13 members on the CALPERS board that are either elected, appointed, or hold office. Three of the, six of the members are elected, three appointed, and four are ex officio. That general membership or composition can't be changed unless there's a majority vote by registered voters in the state of California. CALPERS basically administers a DB plan, or a defined benefit plan. That's the pension plan that Glendale employees and most other, actually, all other individuals in this particular area and cities are members of. The way that works is that the member begins paying into CALPERS at the beginning of their first day of employment. They vest after five years of employment. Hourly employees similarly begin paying into PERS after 1,000 hours of work. Before that, they, their contributions go into another system called PARs. PERS also provides death benefits to eligible beneficiaries and survivors of retired individuals, and they administer a number of other, they administer retirement benefits to a number of other agencies, including the Legislature's Retirement System, Judge's Retirement System, as well. There are three types of benefits that are offered by PERS. The first is service retirement, which is the normal retirement that most people experience. Second is disability retirement, and finally, industrial disability retirement for individuals who might be hurt so badly on the job that they can't return. Those benefits are calculated using a retirement formula or a defined formula. That formula takes into consideration a number of years of service for somebody, their age at the time that they retire, and what their final compensation was. Now, we'll talk a little bit more about this in detail later on, but post-PEPRA, after the implementation of PERS, new members don't use final compensation, they use three years of highest compensation to calculate that benefit. Those specific formulas do differ from agency to agency. Cities previous, prior to PERS, had a number of different options to choose from, so those vary from one place to the other. So, before we really begin to talk about how PERS even came into being, I think you need to take a step backwards and talk about what happened in 1999 with the passage of SB 400. At that time, the state legislature, under the leadership, or with the leadership of Governor Gray Davis, adopted provisions of SB 400, which overnight reduced the retirement age for state workers. They applied enhanced benefit formulas, and they did all this retroactively, not prospectively. So, people who may not have contributed into the system at a higher rate over a career span, literally got a benefit, a significant benefit overnight. As soon as that occurred, there was a significant pressure placed on local agencies to sort of follow suit, and considering the fact that you were at the height of the dot-com boom, and the interest earnings from PERS were so high, there was no initial cost impact to agencies to do that. Let's see. So, after, shortly after it was implemented, the economy began to slow, and in order for CALPERS to begin to recover from those losses, they ended up turning to the employer and increasing the employer contributions to make up for those. However, they also implemented a number of other things to avoid such significant fluctuations in rates from year to year. Some of those included the 15-year smoothing trend for their interest earnings. They increased life expectancy for the mortality rate, and they reduced the assumed rate of return down to what is now about 7 1/4 percent interest. In many of the cases, their actions actually resulted in higher rate implications and budgetary impacts on local agencies, something that I think we've all experienced here over the last six or seven years. And that's when Governor Gray Davis, or Governor Brown, was elected and immediately introduced his 12-point pension reform plan. It was almost a year later, on January 1, 2013, when PERS was actually adopted by the state legislature, and it significantly changed public pensions. It was clearly the most far-reaching public reform effort that had ever been proposed at the state level, something that applied not only to state employees, but all other public agencies throughout California. And that bill was actually adopted into law as part, after negotiations, not only with the governor and the state legislatures, but also with employee associations and unions across the state. So, what does PERS do? Primarily emphasized reductions in long-term costs and liabilities associated with the traditional defined benefit plans, the pensions that we keep hearing about. Some of the major provisions of PERS was reduced benefit formulas and increased retirement ages for new employees. So, you have to be older to retire, and you retire at a lower benefit factor. They eliminated the single highest year as the compensation methodology for new employees and new hires, and implemented a three-year final compensation method. There was a provision in there regarding employee cost sharing, which we'll talk about in a lot more depth in a few more slides. It placed a compensation cap for people in retirement, so there is a certain amount that post-PEPRA, new members would be able to benefit from. They also identified what base pension was, and how, what types of pay would be included in calculating what that pay is. It had to be recurring, so things like uniform allowances, acting pay, assignment pay, those are not PERS-able, those are not included in the final calculation. A few more things that PERS did, eliminated replacement benefit plans, placed a restriction on post-retirement employment. What that did was implemented cooling-off period, there's a certain amount of time that a retired employee has to stay out of the system, and then, once they come back, they can only work a maximum of 960 hours a year. They eliminated airtime. Prior to that, eligible employees could purchase up to five years of service credit at their own cost from PERS. That's no longer an option. You earn the credit you earn, you can't buy any additional credit. Eliminated retroactive pension increases, which we talked about, was a direct result of what occurred with SB 400. So, if there's ever a benefit enhancement, it's prospective, it's not retrospective. Eliminated pension holidays, whereas in 2000 and 2001, cities like Glendale were assured that those rates, those employer rates wouldn't increase because the interest earnings with PERS were so high, we were what was called super-funded. We, our assets surpassed our liabilities. The city owed nothing, therefore, the city was asked not to pay anything. Elimination of pension holidays forces ongoing payments regularly, so that if there is a downturn in the economy, we can weather that storm for a couple of years, or a few years, until it comes back. And finally, implemented a forfeiture of pension benefits upon felony convictions, and I think that kind of speaks for itself. So, prior to the passage of PERS, agencies were free to choose from a number of different benefit formulas. You have two categories on this particular slide. One is for miscellaneous employees, one is for safety employees down below. Number of the slides coming up breaks it down that way for miscellaneous and safety. Agencies could pick from anything from a 2% at 60 formula, that's 2% of your salary at, or the 2% benefit factor at 60 years old, all the way down to 3% at 60. Glendale was right in the middle at 2 1/2 at 55. And actually, Glendale adopted a second tier prior to the implementation of PERS for 2 at 60. And with respect to safety formulas, anything from 2 at 55, all the way to 3 at 50. Post-PEPRA, anybody who contracted with CALPERS and was under certain benefit, those benefit formulas we talked about, were forced to move over into the new benefit formula. So, for our miscellaneous employees, we're at 2 at 60. For our safety, we're 2.7 at 57 now. Today, we have three categories for our PERS members, or for our employees, and it's all based on your date of hire. So, again, we break this down into miscellaneous employees, sworn fire employees, and sworn police employees. If you were hired any time prior to January of 2011, you're considered a classic member, so you still retain your 2 1/2 55 formula. If you were hired between January of 2011 and before January of 2013, you're a second-tier member, so you're 2% at 55. And if you're a miscellaneous employee hired after the implementation of PERS, your new benefit retirement rate is a 2% at 60. And that just goes down the scale for our sworn personnel. One of the things we did in the report was do a quick example of what this all means. We took three examples, an accountant, a police officer, and a firefighter, who all have hypothetically worked 25 years. Each accountant, police officer, firefighter, was calculated under the classic formula first, and then under PERS. So, a 25-year accountant, somebody who worked for the City of Glendale for 25 years, retired, would get, would be eligible for 62%, 62 1/2 percent of their salary, at a monthly top-step rate, salary rate of $5,400, their monthly income with their pension would be about $3,400 before taxes. That same employee with the same number of years of service, with the new 2% at 50 formula, would be- would be at $2,700 roughly. So currently, within our own pension system, we have 2,039 pensioners. Our highest annual pension is right around $211,000. That represents one employee who served well over 30 years at a very high level within this organization and retired. Our lowest annual pension is right around $3.36. So, you know, taking those two out, the real mean compensation rate for average miscellaneous employees is about $30,000, and for safety personnel, it's about 55.
$30,000.
$30,000 is...
About the 150, 200,000 numbers that we're hearing from the public.
Correct.
Okay.
Average.
Well, it's worth noting.
Quite possible. We're not going to name names. So having said all of that, Glendale is not new to pension reform. Glendale's been doing this since the 1980s, well before any other city in this region was. Prior to the passage of Pepper, we had already negotiated a second tier that we just talked about, and we had independently adopted the three-year final compensation provision for new hires. Pepper just helped to solidify that and set a new base standard. Most CalPERS agencies pay the employer's contribution to PERS as well as most of the employees' employee contribution. Those are two factors in calculating how much we pay PERS. The costs are indeed shared in the city of Glendale between the city and the employees. These rates are established annually by the CalPERS Board, and they're determined based on actuarial valuation of liabilities and assets. So those do fluctuate from year to year. We have seen a steady trend to increase those rates, but we also see a flattening out of those rates in 2021 and beyond at this point. Until most recently, a lot of our surrounding cities that we compare ourselves to for all kinds of comparisons, operationally, salary, pay benefits, and everything else, they just recently started engaging their employees to pay their employee contribution for the PERS rates. And in many of those cases, those increased employee contributions were offset by increases in employee salaries as well. So you have to pay 3% or 8% of your employee contribution rate, but we're going to increase your salary by 9%, which is, it's actually PERS-able. So it increases your total PERS-able salary. And I'm talking so fast, I've lost my place in my own presentation here. Let me just find my slides. It was actually all the way back in 2001 when the city and the employee groups negotiated employees picking up the employer contribution or a portion of the employer contribution as well. So what you see here is a quick summary that is fully detailed as Exhibit 1 in your staff report. I think the really important columns to take a look at here is the one that says employer contribution. You'll notice that the employer for miscellaneous employees is paying about 17.46%, and the employee in the last column for miscellaneous are paying anywhere between 8.5% and 11% for these classic members. And those numbers continue to change as the benefit formulas begin to change as well. So essentially, the employee is picking up 8% of the employee contribution, something that a lot of cities don't do. We can talk about that in a little more detail if you want to in this report. But we're also picking up between half a percent with IBW, all the way up to 3.5 additional percent of the employer's share with our safety folks. There's also been a number of other collective bargaining concessions over the years, and that is fully detailed on Page 7 of your staff report. It was just too much information to put on here, but we can talk about that. Matt Doyle's in the audience if you want to get into the details of it. But some of the highlights of that have included pay reductions, increases in cost-sharing of medical premiums, so the city hasn't had to bear the full cost of that. Employees have foregone previously negotiated pay increases that were agreed to in MOU agreements. There's been, we've deferred previously negotiated cost-of-living adjustments or COLAs, as it comes to be known. I don't believe there has been one since 2008. And we've also imposed employment contract provisions on at least one of the associations a few years back. And of course, implemented the second-tier retirement.
It's also worth noting that the cost-sharing is something that has to be done voluntarily through the good-faith negotiation process, cannot be implemented unilaterally.
So one thing that we did as part of this comparison is also take a look at how Glendale compares to some of our comparable cities. We looked at Anaheim, Burbank, Huntington Beach, Pasadena, Santa Ana, and Torrance. With respect to second-tier retirement formulas, six of the eight didn't implement a second-tier retirement formula independently prior to the implementation of Pepper. With respect to employee contributions, many of those same cities recently began to implement or negotiate the employees picking up a portion of the employee's share. Anaheim, Burbank, and Long Beach embarked on this effort between 2012 and 2014. Huntington Beach and Pasadena negotiated this change prospectively, and many of those efforts included multi-year agreements, which were offset by increases in salaries to those employees. Half of the agencies that we surveyed negotiated cost-sharing of the employer's share. Employees in Burbank, Huntington Beach, Long Beach, and Torrance do not contribute towards the employer's share. So while they may be picking up a portion of the employee's share, which was offset by some salary increases, they're not paying a portion of the employer's share like Glendale employees are. Like I said, that's another additional half a percent to about 3.5% depending on the association you're with. With the exception of Santa Ana, all the agencies that we surveyed provided cost-of-living adjustments to offset the increases in the cost-sharing on a dollar-for-dollar basis, so one-for-one. And Glendale's never done that for the short way of saying that. Where are we? So aside from what we've done, what we just recently did was enter into new long-term agreements or multi-year agreements with our employee associations. What we've done here is provide you with a brief synopsis of what those were for the three associations we recently dealt with, including the Glendale Police Office Association, the Glendale City Employees Association, and Glendale Managers Association. So specific to GPOA, the three provisions or the three enhancements, I guess, in those agreements would be a retention of 5% assignment pay for certain specialty pays. That was specific to things like detective bureau assignments, K-9 units, SWAT, Financial Crimes Unit. Second was the standardization of the Code 7 policy for officers dealing with compensated meal breaks. That pretty much brings us in line with the industry standard as well as FLSA requirements. And there was a slight increase in an officer's ability to cash out unused holiday leave. I believe we went from 32 hours of cash-out ability to 42 hours of cash-out ability, all very negligible in the bigger scheme of things. With the GCA, we entered into a three-year agreement. The agreement calls for a 1% salary adjustment in July of 2015, and there's going to be, there's another 3% coming in, I believe, July of 2016, but that's offset by an additional 1% employee contribution to the employer's share. So for GCA, if they were paying 3% of the employer's share, now they'll be paying 4% of the employer's share. So their total percentage goes from 11% to 12% of pay. So when you see what the total monthly salary is posted at, 12% of that will automatically go towards pensions that the employee is paying out of their own pocket. We also established $25 a month contribution towards an employee's retiree health savings plan, or RHSP, as we more commonly refer to it. We allowed for the conversion of the $150 health benefit from an application basis where you had to prove that you went, you know, a certain number of times a year to a flat $150 for GCA employees. Again, very negligible cost. And established assignment pays for a very small group of forensics, DNA employees, and for the Public Works and Fire Department employees. I think that was a total of 11 employees citywide. Finally, moving on to our GMA employees. Again, we entered into a three-year agreement, same provisions with the 1%, 3% salary adjustments with a 1% pickup of the employer's share. For police sworn sergeants of GMA, there was a salary adjustment for the police lieutenant classification that impacts 10 employees. We approved a $150 a month increase in post-reimbursement or incentive pay for employees post as the police officer's standards training. $25 a month increase to RHSP, conversion of the $450 a year health benefit to a flat amount. Again, it's $450, but you don't have to actually, you know, go buy a whole bunch of health equipment and provide us receipts for it. And we granted standby assignment pay to one employee in Information Services who primarily or solely deals with the police department, and they're on call 24 hours a day, and they are utilized 24 hours a day. So now that we've talked about all of that and kind of getting towards the real crux of this conversation, one last thing to talk about, I think, is OPEB because it keeps coming up. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. These are benefits that an employee begins to receive at the start of their retirement. It does not include pension benefits that are paid to retired employees. In the context of Glendale, OPEB provides the city employees with a form of subsidized medical premiums. So we have retired employees, we have active employees. What we do is we actually have been combining or blending those rates into one rate, which essentially has reduced the rate that a retiree would pay had they not been blended. So instead of the retirees being in a separate group, that blending resulted in lower medical premiums for them. The difference between what the blended rate is and what the unblended rate is is what creates that OPEB liability. Unlike, at our last valuation of June 30 of 2013, our existing OPEB liability was right around $214 million. $224 million of that was attributable to active employees. $90 million of it was attributed to retired employees. We disclosed this liability in the CAFRA, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Plan, and under new GASP pronouncements, we have to begin booking that in our financial statements, which will have a direct impact on our unrestricted fund balance citywide. As a result, the city is actively looking to take steps to, number one, reduce that liability significantly, but the primary focus is to eliminate that altogether. Unlike pension benefits, blending of medical insurance premiums is not a vested right. The courts have weighed in on that. While we have an obligation to meet and confer with our employee associations on unblending of medical premiums, we don't have that same legal obligation to do that with the retiree groups. However, having said that, we've already begun having those conversations with our retiree groups. We had our first official conversation with them last week to indicate what the plan is moving forward, and we have at least two or three more meetings set up in the next several months to talk about different options that will significantly help out in this particular effort. So what we're looking to do is engage our existing active employee associations in unblending these medical premiums as of January 2016. Taking that one step alone eliminates $124 million of the OPEB liability overnight. That leaves your $90 million for your retired employees, and if we were to implement one of several options that we're currently discussing, that would step that down potentially within the next several years. So when you're talking about retirement plans, there's really two kinds that we primarily deal with in this industry. What we're talking about primarily tonight is pensions. That's a defined benefit plan or a DB plan. The second one is a 401K-type plan that you see in the private sector quite frequently. That's considered a DC plan, a defined contribution plan. Proponents of DC plans, like a 401K, cite a number of reasons why they're great. One of them is the perceived portability. An employee who participates in a 401K can take that 401K with them from one employer to the other, from place to place. And it provides for predictable employer costs. Employers typically have a match contribution that they commit to, whether it's 3%, 5%, 10%, whatever it is, and they know what their potential worst-case financial exposure is on an annual basis. Because it's the employee who actually owns that 401K, it's the employee who makes those investments, and it's the employee who bears the financial risk of making good decisions or really bad decisions. So the question is, can an agency terminate its existing DB plan like CalPERS and replace it with a DC plan like 401K or a hybrid? And what I mean by a hybrid is can we stop, can we just put a hold on the existing CalPERS pension plan that we have for existing employees who will continue to pay into that system until they leave and retire and allow for new employees to be a part of a 401K plan? In essence, have a side-by-side, two side-by-side plans. Technically speaking, you can eliminate a DB plan and switch to a DC plan for your existing or future workforce, but you cannot implement a hybrid plan. With CalPERS, you're either all-in or you're all-out. Under California law, any agency that has full-time employees and is a member of CalPERS has to have their entire employee base within the CalPERS system.
We've had some of the people who have come up and spoken to us and in the public say, "Why not just leave everyone on CalPERS that's here because it's so expensive to leave, but anyone new coming in would be on a 401K and Social Security?" You're saying, "Under California law, we can't do that."
Correct. That is what was called a soft freeze years ago, but post-Pepper, soft freezes aren't an option any longer. You're either all-in or all-out. So you either implement a hard freeze where you stop it all and you start fresh.
So the people who are suggesting this are pretty ignorant of the law.
It is not allowed under the law currently.
Okay, thank you.
So I just very briefly spoke about soft freezes and hard freezes. With the soft freeze, we would close a DB plan to new hires but retain the existing plan for current employees. That's just not an option any longer. I could talk about financial impacts associated with doing that, but considering as though it's just not an option, your pleasure, I'd like to just move on, or I could talk about it. All right. So under a hard freeze, you essentially stop future accruals for all current and future employees. This would require the agency to pay its benefit termination liability in one lump-sum to CalPERS agency to get out, so to speak. And as of our last valuation, that termination liability was estimated at, was actually calculated at, not estimated at. CalPERS actually came back and indicated that that termination liability is $1.4 billion due in one lump-sum payment, and we'll talk about that in detail in a couple more minutes. And I promise we're almost done. However, if we were to eliminate CalPERS altogether and pay our termination liability, it doesn't mean that you can just coast scot-free. There are serious implications associated with that. One thing is, under the law, you would have to provide some kind of a replacement benefit plan for your employee base. So you're either going to create some benefit plan that's greater than what Social Security offers, or you're going to have to enroll all your employees in Social Security. There's a number of other things to take into consideration if you were to choose to go down this path. There's a number of legal, statutory, and operational implications associated with it. Any level of separation from PERS would require an amendment of our city's charter. There's extensive meet-and-confer sessions that would be required with our employee associations and bargaining groups, and quite honestly, it puts you at a severe disadvantage in the labor market. There are no other agencies who have done that in this region or, to our knowledge, in the state. Glendale would have been the only one, or would be the only one, and I'm not sure how you would compete for a talented employee base or talent pool at that point. So if we were to choose to terminate our CalPERS agreement, I already mentioned that our long-term, our financial liability to do so would be $1.4 billion. That would require us to issue long-term pension obligation bonds in order for us to pay our bill to CalPERS in one lump-sum payment. Those funds, in turn, would be taken back by CalPERS, invested or placed into their termination trust in order to pay the benefits for Glendale employees who are currently in the system, and that trust will have to remain open until the last Glendale city employee who's in that system leaves, work, retires, and dies. As long as you have an employee who's still in the system, that fund has to remain active. And actually, it has to remain active one step further if they had survivor benefits and they had a survivor who was going to benefit from their plan because they contributed into it, it would have to stay open until that person died. Another thing to consider is the cost of administration, that service, and I'll get into the details of that in a second. So I talked about Social Security a little bit. We would be required to enter all of our employees in Social Security unless we provided an alternate minimum level of retirement benefit. Many of our public employees, most notably our safety employees, not us, but California employees, don't participate in Social Security currently, so that would be a new cost borne by the city. The cost of Social Security is about 12.4% borne equally by the employee and the city, so that would be an additional 6.2% above our current obligations. So I think this is that one-third of that report that I talked about initially. We've talked about everything that leads into this point. So what's the cost of terminating our PERS agreement, so to speak? In order to do that... In order to do that, we took a number of assumptions and information that we have into consideration, very conservative numbers, might I add, in terms of the assumptions. These aren't wild ideas. Considering the fact that our PERS unfunded termination liability is $1.4 billion as of our last valuation in 2013, that represents about $755 million for miscellaneous employees, $669 million for our safety employees. We know that PERS assumes a discount rate of about 3.72%. We know that our net pension obligations, our net pension expenses in 2015 were about $29.2 million, are about $29.2 million. We know that we would have to issue pension obligation bonds with a 30-year financing term in order to pay the $1.425 billion upfront. We also know that based on current interest rates, that rate for the bond would be right around 5%. And we know that if we were to replace it, we'd have to enroll our employees in Social Security as well as some type of a 401K plan. We assumed we would, the city would either match it a 5% or a 10% match. At a rate of about 5%, our annual debt service to pay off those pension obligation bonds at the assumptions that we made over the next 30 years would be $93 million a year for 30 years, retiring them in 2045.
By way of reference, your general fund budget is in excess of $180 million a year.
Then we'd have to enroll our employees in Social Security, adding an additional 6.2% of payroll. And then we would assume that with the variation of the 401K plan that I mentioned at 5% or 10%, that would add another 6.4 to $12.8 million. So all in all, when you do the math, the total termination cost for terminating Glendale's PERS agreement and substituting it with Social Security, paying your debt service, and implementing some sort of a 401K plan would be between $78 million and $84 million more per year for the next 30 years, above what we pay PERS today. This particular slide here shows how we came to that math. We know that our net pension expenses are about $29.1 million with Social Security, a 10% 401K match, and our debt service or the $93 million that we'd be paying. Our annual expense would be $113 million compared to the $29. With a 5% variation, it would be $107 million instead of the $29. So what happens after 30 years? What happens in 2045 once we retire that debt? We're still going to have the ongoing Social Security expense costs plus the 401K costs that we're estimating at between $14 and $21 million a year as compared to our $29 million today. And this all assumes that PERS rates and the 15-year smoothing efforts that PERS has done hold steady. There is a chance, there is a slight chance that those rates not only will hold steady but will go down after 2021. But that's why I say we use conservative numbers. So in 2045, we essentially would have spent $2.8 billion to exit PERS in order to begin saving between $8 and $15 million a year. It sounds somewhat, I don't know how this is going to come across, and my intent isn't for this to come across in a bad way, but if we were going to look at this from a business, as a business decision, a fiscally conservative business decision, your return on investment, if you were to implement Social Security, terminate your CalPERS agreement, implement Social Security, and a 5% 401K match, your return on investment would be 158 years. And if you were to do a 10% 401K match, that would increase to 304 years. So the last leg of our presentation here is some of the cities that we hear about in the news recently. Over the last couple of years, there's been numerous media reports. We went ahead and picked San Diego, San Jose, and Stockton just based on some of the similarities as well as some of the allegations of, you know, cities are just going to go into bankruptcy to eliminate their CalPERS agreements altogether. In two of the three cases, the reform efforts were really focused on paving the way for better managing short and long-term pension costs, decreasing the unfunded pension liabilities, and avoiding cutting additional services to cities, the employees, or I'm sorry, for the residents. Specifically, the measures in San Diego and San Jose, which were really a grassroots effort by residents in those cities as well as had support from their elected officials, a good number of their elected officials, served to modify the retirement benefits for the city employees and the retirees by increasing employee contributions, something that most cities hadn't done up until now, Glendale has been doing for a couple of decades. They wanted to establish voluntary reduced pension plans for current employees. They want to establish pension cost and benefit limitations for new employees, similar to what we did with second-tier and the three-year final compensation or three-year compensation averages. They wanted to modify some retirement procedures, suspend COLAs temporarily in case of emergencies, and wanted to require voter approval for future pension expenses. And they were successful to some degree. In fact, in both cities, charter amendments were made, the charter was changed, voters voted for it, and both ballot initiatives passed. However, we don't know that there's very little case law to support whether or not this is an action that's going to be upheld in the courts because the day after these, both of these initiatives were adopted in 2012, both cities were sued and we're still waiting for court decisions on these. It's also important to note that in both the case of San Diego and San Jose, each of those cities maintained an individually self-funded plan. And I think there's been some confusion about what a self-funded plan actually means. A self-funded plan is not a plan that's solely funded by employees and nobody else. A self-funded plan essentially means that an employee and the employer contribute into the pension plan, but the plan is administered and managed by the city themselves. So San Diego and San Jose weren't members of CalPERS, but they also weren't operating a pension plan different from CalPERS. It just meant they were investing their own money, similar to how LA City does it or LA County does it, quite honestly. What ends up happening in those cases, though, is those cities who administer self-funded plans bear the burden or bear the financial risk for making bad decisions solely as opposed to spreading that risk and spreading those costs amongst a pool of other agencies like CalPERS does. One other thing to note, yeah, it's just a couple more slides. I'm almost done. I want to stop too. In both of those cities, neither of those cities, San Diego or San Jose, proposed eliminating their pension plans because they knew if they did, they would be facing the same type of termination liabilities that any other city that's a member of CalPERS would, except in their case, it would be significantly larger because their employee base and their liabilities are so much greater. Final note on this, since the passage of both of those initiatives in 2012, Pepper took effect shortly thereafter in 2013 and essentially rectified or addressed a number of the enhancements or the take-backs that both San Diego and San Jose were doing. So whether or not the lawsuits are successful, I think Pepper has already addressed a number of those issues legislatively. Stockton was a little bit different. Stockton did not, Stockton was bankrupt. They were not, the city itself was not trying to unilaterally or independently modify its pension benefits. During their restructuring efforts in bankruptcy court, there was one creditor who sued and tried to limit or impair the city's pension plan through those bankruptcy proceedings, indicating that had the city done that, they would get a greater percentage of their investment back as opposed to the plan that they had proposed to emerge out of bankruptcy. At that point in time, the city itself, the employee unions, and PERS each contended that pension benefits were vested right under the California Constitution and therefore could not be impaired. And initially, the federal judge made some waves in the news, indicated that CalPERS pension contracts could be overturned in bankruptcy, but later outlined that it was very difficult to do so and approved Stockton's plan to exit PERS, exit bankruptcy with their pension plan intact. In the final ruling, he indicated, and this is a quote, "We have a triangle bilateral relations in the law." He essentially said, "There's really three angles to look at this from and each one is interconnected. First, you have your basic pension contract and that agreement is between the city and its employees for paying pension. The second leg is a contract between the city and CalPERS. And finally, you have a relationship between the city, between CalPERS and the employees who are the third-party beneficiaries under the law and have enforcement rights to enforce that contract." So in order for the judge to cut those pensions, the city would have had to reject its contract with CalPERS and in his words, quote, "More importantly, its contract with employees." And I think the reason why I used those terms was because there was a U.S. Supreme Court decision in 1984 that set a really high standard for rejecting collective bargaining agreement. And in this particular case, the package of pay concessions that would have to be reopened after they had been negotiated, which according to the judge would have been impractical as a matter of practicality, extremely difficult. Therefore, the bankruptcy plan was approved as proposed by the city of Stockton. And with that, I'm going to take a break and turn it back over to you for questions and comments.
Mr. Terrell.
Hey, thank you. Ever seen Wikipedia? It's the very short, it's the very short digest of information.
I just have one question.
I don't mean to criticize, but the part when you got into buying out of PERS, that was absolutely fantasy land. I don't think that's going to occur. But I appreciate the exercise in financial accounting. Mr. Weaver.
I just have one question. Maybe I missed it. $1.4 billion to get out, but we would have to bond it. Okay, did you say what the total cost after the bonding, I mean?
$2.8 billion.
$2.8 billion.
Billion with a B.
Almost $100 million a year.
Almost $100 billion.
$100 million a year.
$100 million a year, but $2.8 billion.
Okay. Okay, I have a card from Mr. Mohill.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Mr. Najarian, may I have the same 20 minutes that he had to speak?
No.
No.
How much time can I have?
Can have three minutes.
Gee, you're generous. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, are you all scared? I am. What a presentation. And Mr. Najarian allows me three minutes to talk about the most important subject matter the city faces.
I'd have given you two.
Of course you would, Mayor Weaver. I remember you, or even one.
I remember you very clearly.
Arrogance, arrogance.
Even at the debates.
Why do we have an independent person who is not associated with our city do a report like this? How about Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association? Why don't we have them come in? Ever heard of the city of Yorba Linda? They had local police and they switched over to the county and nobody lost their jobs. They just switched badges. Now, if a little city like Yorba Linda could save $3 million, can we just imagine the largest city of Glendale? Would you show my powerpoint now, please? As we're talking right now, CalPERS is a corrupt organization. Here we have the former pension official, his name is J.R. Vialobus. He's gone. He committed suicide last month because he stole from the pension plan about, I think I have the number here, $50 million. Right here, headline news, ladies and gentlemen. This is the type of organization that CalPERS is. We need to leave this organization. Now, on the bulletin board over here, excuse me, look, this was filed, this was prepared back in 2013, so they've made some adjustments, the city, as far as the pensions, but this is basically how the pension structure is. If you look at the first column, last year's salary, years of service, then benefit factor, percentage of year's salary, and pension for life. To look at fire and police, if an individual is making $100,000 at 30 years, most are making in excess of $100,000, $200,000, their benefit factor is 3% and they can retire at age 50 or 55 now under the new program, that's a tier program. They're going to be receiving, ladies and gentlemen, 90% of that $100,000 for life. Can we afford $90,000 a year for a safety person? Now, I respect our police and firemen. They're good and we need them, but can we understand the politics of this? Then we have the managers getting 75% and we have the general employees getting 60%. Why do we, if it's such a great organization, why must we guarantee their 7.5% rate of return in their investment? La Sera doesn't, that's the county. There are so much more I can talk about this pension program, but you just want to go like this to me because I'm the biggest, loudest person about this. But you know, one-third of the city employees last year had salaries over $100,000 each. Can we afford to stay in CalPERS? We cannot. We can't afford to stay in CalPERS. We need to exit ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other public speaking cards on this, so Delian.
Okay, well, I asked to bring this report to the public and to city council, and I want to thank John Tuktalian. That was fabulous. It's a great comprehensive report that you did, and I know that you've gotten compliments about that from many others. But I brought it to the forefront because our pension obligations are a major consideration in the health of our city. And we have to, and I feel that this report gives the public current and future pension obligations impact, if our government is sustainable, the sustainability impact. So with this report, it was very good, however, and I think it shows that Glendale has been, and council and staff have been proactively addressing our pension reform. However, I think the issue is so important and it's so complex and in order to have complete transparency for the public, because we are asked every place we go about the pensions and what we're doing about it. Tonight was an opportunity for the public to hear exactly how hard this city has been working towards pension reform, about the concessions that our employees have been making, and what it would cost to exit PERS. And so I think that was really valuable information. However, because, as I said, the complexity and my desire for transparency, I would like to ask that we hire or send out an RFP for an outside consultant, an expert, so that we can make sure they can review our pension obligations, research, and bring us information if there is any way or any place where they can give us advice in order to assure that the city's short and long-term pension and OPEB programs are sustainable. And that's, I just feel it's highly important, hugely important, to do that.
I'm not interested in that. With all due respect, I think that's an insult to the city staff, but they don't know what they're doing if we have to bring somebody in from the outside. I've dealt with these benefit packages and salaries for 18 years. I sat there in 2000 with our city manager and our actuarial and everything telling us that we're fully funded. Don't worry, you can give all these additional benefits. Nobody else was there, I was there. I can still remember that. Wow, this is great. Yeah, well, PERS wasn't exactly on the up and up. They were crooked. Now the latest things are trying to get out of hedge funds because they're risky investments. They got new leadership up there. I can't go back and tell, well, the current ones are messing it up too? No. It's been too much in the news over the last few months. We have new PERS directors and they're running it. The ones in the past were crooked. The governors of this state of California messed it all up to begin with. I'm sorry, but we have to work on a budget, we have to balance the budget, and if Sacramento's sitting up there taking it out of our control like they were back in 2000, 2001, we're left with a bag of trying to face all our employees and explain why we're having to do what we do. They started the mess up there, it ends up down here at the local level. I think our people are doing a great job. We don't need a consultant to come in here and tell us that, no, we can change things. I don't believe that any consultant would know any more than we know now. So I won't support it.
So with all due respect, I am definitely not in favor of bringing an outside So with all due respect, I am definitely not in favor of bringing an outsider in to review our procedures. I mean, it really comes down to the faith that you have in your finance director, in your city manager, and Mr. Taktalian, to give us the information. The information is out there. We have the information. And to the extent that this might be a way to bring a third party in, to put extra pressure on our employee unions, to make greater concessions, I'm totally against it. Anything that we ask of them is between us. We sit across the table. We have vigorous debates. We give and we take. And to have in our hand, potentially, a report from this outside entity foreign to Glendale to say, "Look, it says you guys are making too much. We should introduce another tier. We should cut your benefits. You should introduce more." Just because he, it's not us that say that, but this is what the outsider says, is just not genuine. We have had, we have had some very frank and, at times, boisterous discussions with our labor unions. And we have, in almost every chance we've had to sit down, we've come to an agreement with them. So I don't want to add another layer of complexity to this. I trust my staff. I trust the city manager. I trust the labor groups that we sit down and work with that, and they've made some awful large concessions. I mean, you have seen what we look like compared to all those other cities. I don't want to belabor the point. They might say, "Yeah, look what we've done. We're going to go back." But they haven't gone back. They've sat down with us through the tough times and rolled up their sleeves and tightened their belts and got their rank and file together to accept the deals that we've discussed. And we're hoping that we see the light at the end of the tunnel. We're hoping that our revenues increase, that we can make them more generous offers for years, for the lean years that have gone by. And I think that's the way we need to do it. With all due respect, I've been through 10, 10 of these bargaining sessions with our labor unions, two on the Community College Board of Trustees, and countless others with my other agencies that I've been on. It's not easy, but it involves a level of frankness and directness to solve the problem. And in each and every case, except one that we're still working on, we've come to a resolution. So that's just the way I feel about it.
Mr. Weaver, if I could add, and I can't say how proud I am of our workforce, all the different groups. I spent 37 years in civil service at the federal government level. I saw cuts made all across different times, and we had to live with it. Our primary goal, according to charter, is fiscal responsibility. If you think it's any fun for any of us, even in the councils I served before, to do what we've had to do to all the associations in terms of pay cuts and increases, and you're paying more benefits, if you think we like that, you're totally wrong. But we have that fiscal responsibility, that we must balance the revenue with the expenditures and not drive this city into oblivion, which could happen. So it's, I'm just so proud of all of you because you've stuck through us, stuck through everything with us, and I hope there's happier days in the future. I think we're making progress, as Mr. Elliott has talked about. So thank you so much, at least from this councilman. I'm sure I speak for all my colleagues.
Let me go to Ms. Friedman, then we'll come back.
Okay. Well, first, what a great presentation. Really comprehensive. I was, I was very impressed by the depth, by the level of analysis. It was the most comprehensive report I've seen on our pension system. I want to thank Ms. Devine for asking for it to be brought forward. I do think it was really very helpful for the council, very informative to the public to really see the issues that are at play, the historical perspective about what's happened over the years. It was a very frank and honest, I think, presentation of where we are with our pension system and where we've been, mistakes that were made, you know, admitting those and talking about what we've done over the years to try to right the ship to be a sustainable workforce, and what we're looking to do in the future with OPEB and other obligations. So thank you for that report. And I think it was the exact right length. It was not too long, and it was not too short. It was just right. So thank you. But again, thanks to, you know, Councilmember Devine for her leadership in bringing that So one thing that I want to reiterate, because it was mentioned in there, but it's something that's really easy to forget when people are saying, "Oh, well, the employees are getting X amount of money every year. Isn't that horrible?" Don't ever forget that in the City of Glendale, they're paying for that pension. We're not paying for the majority, for a lot of that. Most of that's coming directly out of the pocket of the employee, the same way if you matched a 401K and they said, "I'm going to take that match, and I'm going to pay my 5% or I'm going to pay my 7%." They're paying, and that's what's being invested in coming back, not, you know, a giveaway from us. So keep that in mind when you look at those 60%, 70% that they're then getting later on. We have been negotiating for years, and since I've been on this council, in very good faith. And let me tell you, when the employees walk out of those rooms, and I'm not in, you know, we're, we direct the negotiators, but we're not face-to-face with the employees. But I know when they walk out of there, they're not going, "Woohoo, look what we got." It's been a tough couple of years, certainly from the recession and even before that onwards. They have been giving concessions. It has been very, very difficult for the union leadership to go back to their members and get them to ratify a lot of these contracts where they're not getting cost-of-living increases and where they're giving back, and they're giving more percentages, and they're paying more towards their pensions. And they're seeing the workforce cut, so they're having to work harder and harder to make up for that, and they're expected to do more. And in my experience, they do it because they are dedicated public servants, and they're people who really believe that what they're doing is working in this community to make this a wonderful place to live for the residents, and that's why they're here. And I know it has not been a happy time for them. I see it when I walk through the city campus, and I see people who have seen those benefits decrease and seen their workload increased and are unsure about their future at a time where we've been laying employees off. And still come to work with a smile and wanting to serve the public, and they're willing to work on their weekends, and they're willing to do the toy drives, and they're willing to spend the extra time working in the library and going to the public events that they go to. And by the way, I know that the residents appreciate it. I know that they do. And I'm saying this to the employees out there. I know when I talk to people in the City of Glendale that they always say how great the employees of this city are. I always hear from people, "Gosh, you know, they came and they trimmed my tree, and they knocked on the door, and they asked if we, if we could, if we wanted anything extra," or "The fire people, firemen came to our house. They got there in four minutes, and they put that fire out," or "The police officer took the time to talk to my kid and, you know, and really set them straight." And I hear this time after time and day after day in the City of Glendale. So they, they appreciate it. And as you see, the employees have made very difficult concessions. So I think that this report tells part of the story, but it's not always telling the story of how hard this has been for the workforce. And it's easy to point fingers and say, "Boy, they're getting pensions." You know, and I'm not getting a pension. Well, in truth, more people should be getting pensions, and it's a shame that we've moved away from a unionized workforce or a workforce where businesses pay pensions. And the whole 401K thing was really a way for employers to save money and advocate responsibility and give it to their employees and not have to take that responsibility on themselves. And I don't think that this country, the workers in this country are better off for it. I don't think you can look around and say how much better our middle class is now that we've had years and years of 401Ks. I think it's just the opposite right now. So my question, in terms of, sorry?
I was going to say, come on back to Glendale.
So in terms of, you know, hiring a consultant, I guess, you know, I'm not ready to just dismiss it out of hand. I understand the impetus behind it. You know, we want to be sure that we kind of have done what we can, and I guess I have a couple of questions. One question is, you know, I guess my concern is, well, on the plus side, I could see, you know, maybe someone comes in and has some solutions that will benefit to our workforce and a benefit to us, and, you know, we want to be, always be open to exploring those opportunities, and I have no problem with that because anything that we do would have to be up to us. But I also kind of have a concern that a consultant will come in and say, "Hey, I know how we can, you know, cut the, how we can make it cheaper for the city. Have the employees pay more. They're paying 12%. Have them pay 15%." You know, and if that kind of comes back, then, you know, what do we do with that? You know, it is, it is a negotiation always. I mean, if there's something out there we're not seeing that doesn't hurt the employee, you know, that doesn't hurt, that the employees would agree to, that we're not seeing, I can't imagine what it'd be, but, you know, I think we'd all be open to that idea. I would like to know what it would cost to hire this, you know, to hire someone if, in a time where we're cutting the rose float and we're saying, "We'll only put a little bit of money into that, and we're only going to hire the four new crossing guards when we all say we could use 15 crossing guards." Is this a crossing guard's worth of consultant time? What value are we getting out of it? So before I say yes or no, maybe we can kind of get that back. I mean, have other cities done this? Can you reach out, Mr. Ochoa, to your city manager friends and say, "Has anyone brought a consultant in, and what did you get back? Can we see that report? Was this something that would be valuable? What did it cost?" Because I'm not sure, I just want to know what it is that I'd be approving. I mean, I totally appreciate the impetus behind it. I think it's a good instinct to ask for that. I want to know what it is, what we'd do with it. Is it, as Mr. Najarian said, something we'd walk into a negotiation and waive, because I'm not really interested in that? Is it something that might come up with something very creative we haven't thought of? Well, is there such an animal out there, do you think?
In terms of the best management practices, if no one is doing as much as we are doing, then it's hard to imagine what that might be. Now, if you want a bona fide study, something that actually has value to you as a policymaker, to the employees as they are represented, then my guess is that you would not just do some quick and easy, politically-driven type of cursory review. You would want a benefits attorney. You would want an actuary. You would want a benefits consultant to come in and prepare this. And those folks don't work cheap. We have, we have retained a benefits attorney. We have retained an actuary. We have retained benefit consultants that have been part of crafting and constructing all of the reforms that you have considered and ultimately approved. So if it's going to be a cost, maybe it's 50, maybe it's $100,000 to bring a team in that's going to provide a study that is actually going to mean something.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I don't know that I'm prepared right now to spend $100,000 on this report, but why don't, can you, Ms. Ochoa, go and just, you know, in all fairness to Ms. Devine, I want to explore this before I dismiss it. Can you see if anyone in the city manager community has had something like this done recently and what they've gotten out of it?
At the council's direction, surely.
I want to know what that, I want to know what that $100,000 buys us before we commit to it. I mean, that's...
I mean, are you asking for an RFP or something at this point?
Me? No, I would just like him to informally explore it with the city. I know that the city managers, they're like a little cabal, and they, they talk and they chat, call each other, and they commiserate, and they whine, and I'm sure that you could find out if there's some other city who's, who's done something like this.
To the extent that they would look back at what we do and say, "Well, what are you guys doing?" That's, that is the breadth of their experience. And less than until you are wanting and willing to break from PERS, which is, you see, I don't think it's, it's worth any time to throw money at that type of calculation. In terms of benefits, by all means, we can bring in a consultant to look at those benefits. I will tell you that either you're going to decrease service to save money, meaning drop bodies and/or just cut back in the amount of things that we do, or you're going to cut compensation directly for the bodies that you have.
Why are we all assuming that there's something wrong? My intention actually is to bring an expert in that says, "You are really doing the best that you possibly can." These people out there that work for this city, that have given up, made concessions, they're doing the best they can. And that's what I'm hoping that we get back so that we can take it, we being the council and all of us, can take it to the citizens and say, "Look, this is what this staff..." I mean, you look at the key performance indicators that we saw in the last, please, those of you that are watching, go to the website and look at those indicators. Staff is doing an amazing job. We know that. And I just want, I just think that this is an important issue that if we get a, let's say we hire a fiduciary, and he comes, he or she comes in and looks at this and says, "You are doing an amazing job. You are at the forefront." And then we can actually say to everybody, "Be calm, stay, everything is under control. Everyone is getting what they deserve. They are, they are producing. They are working hard. Jobs are getting done. Services are being, being done." And, and that's all I want, is, is to have this final, this, you know, this is the first step, this comprehensive report. Second step, have it confirmed so that someone, the public doesn't come back at us and say, "Yeah, but that was done inside." No, it wasn't. We found out from it, an outside expert, that this, this staff is doing the best they can, and even better than most.
Mr. Najarian?
And everyone here will tell you that. Mr. Weaver?
18 years until three or four gadflies showed up and started to pick apart the salaries, this issue wasn't talked about. My 18 years, it was never talked about. And I still say this is an insult to the city staff. We got professionals. We hire people to do, to do the reviews. We do internal audits. We do external audits. We bring in actuaries and stuff to do this. We're going to go out, it's going to be a whole team hired. Oh, well, this company? Well, we'll go over to this company because they didn't do it. We're going to check what this company already did for the city and see if we can find a fault in what they did. And then they're going to have to work with the staff for how many hundreds of hours to pull all this stuff together. This isn't just like a come in and look over somebody's shoulder. To me, this is a significant amount of work. $100,000 doesn't even begin to buy the cost to us and what it will do to the workforce to hear such a report coming out. Where the heck are the people complaining that we're not transparent? God, every poll I've ever seen on this city says almost 90% of the people in this city think that we're doing a good job, employees and council. And now we're going to check it out because we're not sure? I will never vote for a single penny to be voted. I can lose 4 to 1, but I'm sure I'm not going to spend a penny. This is a waste of our time.
Okay, I'd like to wrap this up. Unless there's direction to go forward with Ms. Devine's proposal, I think Mr. Weaver's clear, I'm clear, it's up to you, or the second, if it's going to go forward.
I, I'm not, I'm not in a position right now to spend $100,000 on this. I just think that, I'm not convinced that it will get $100,000 of value out of it. I mean, I do think that people worry about public pensions because I think that public employees have been made the boogeyman by a lot of the media unfairly, and the same way that unions have been made, you know, the boogeyman when, you know, when, when it's convenient for it to happen. But I, after being in this organization and doing these negotiations for six years, I don't, you know, I don't feel like we have an out-of-control pension system here by any means, by any means. And I think that report shows it. And we do, you know, we do get allowances from our employees every single time we negotiate, and we come and we report out on it. And if this report is meant, you know, if it comes out and it's sort of a PR exercise, I, you know, I don't know that it would really be worth that sort of sizable investment. If we could do something that kind of gets to that goal for a lot less money, you know, that's something that I would revisit, but for $100,000, I wouldn't be prepared at this time, so I would...
And again, just to be very clear, when I say $100,000...
$70,000.
Well, but even so, that's to bring, that's to do a bona fide, top-to-bottom review of our compensation structure. And again, if you're going to do that, you will retain an attorney like the one we have retained, an actuary like Mr. Bartel, a benefit consult like Keenan, and set them loose, not direct their research, and let the research go where the research goes. That is a top-to-bottom review, and the, the policy implication there is going to be, well, do you learn anything new or not? And if you do, well, then you still have to contend with, with the meet and confer process, whether or not it's in alignment with the values, whether or not it makes sense in terms of our competitiveness for talent and retention. Or if it doesn't tell you anything new, then that amount of money that you've spent, whether it's $5,000, $50,000, $500,000, well, then what is the, the policy trade-off? What could you have bought with those dollars versus not? And but that's what you get, I was going to say, that's what you get paid for, but that's what you volunteered for.
Right. I definitely appreciate what Councilmember Devine is trying to do here. I definitely appreciate what Councilmember Devine is trying to do here. And so I hate to kind of, I hate to write on the, the parade because I think it's the right instinct, but I'll, I'll pass on this right now as well.
Okay, this is a motion to note and file.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Uh, without any, we can do this by affirmation.
Why?
You could, or you could take a vote.
Let's take a vote.
We're just noting and filing.
I understand. Let's take roll on this, please.
Councilmember Devine?
No.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian?
Okay, uh, let's move on to the next item, please.
Nine hearings, nine aid director of community development regarding determine, determine if any nonprofit agencies are available to provide public paratransit services as required by the Federal Transit Administration. Nine A1 resolution finding that there is no nonprofit agency readily available for services.
Okay, Mr. Ochoa.
This is a, a public hearing that we do periodically and it has to do with our paratransit services. Um, I believe Ms. Engel, oh, I'm sorry. Who is going to this one, Catherine?
Is this a brief report?
Oh, Silva, yes. It, it's a public hearing that we have to, to do as it pertains to paratransit. We'll give you a very brief staff report and then take whatever public testimony emanates from the public hearing.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. We are in the process of applying for a Federal Transit Administration Section 5310 grant to replace our paratransit vehicles, our dialerite vehicles. And a requirement of that grant is that a public agency hold a hearing to see if there are any nonprofit agencies that are readily available and competent to hold, to actually provide the dialerite service. To date, we have not gotten any comments or any interest from any nonprofits. And this hearing was advertised for over 30 days. So I would ask that at the conclusion of this hearing, if there are, is no interest from any nonprofit agency, that you go ahead and approve the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, let me ask, if there are any nonprofit organizations qualified to provide dialerite service to the city of Glendale, please step forward.
Do you want to open and close the public hearing then?
I've opened it already.
Oh, you opened it? Sorry, missed that.
Okay. I mean, this is a rather technical, sophisticated process involving dispatch and reimbursement and vehicle maintenance and all sorts of things. So we, we gave it our shot. If there, I have no public speaker cards, if my colleagues...
You're closing the hearing?
I will close the public hearing.
Nine A1.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman? Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinanian? Mayor Protem? Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you. And the next item.
Twelve oral communications, five minutes. Discussion is limited, limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. First speaker is Reema Hagopian, followed by Margaret Hammond and others after that.
Good evening, council members. My name is Reema Hagopian, resident on Lexington. As you all know, I was here last, last week, almost the end of the 90-day term that council had decided to change with the TPC's decision to honor the hours of the change from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, two hours. So this last week, I made an extra effort to stay at home and monitored the street, took off some time from work in block hours during morning hours, during afternoon and kind of reschedule, you know, rearranged my schedule to see really what goes on so I can actually make some calls and really assess the situation more at hand. So multiple calls went out to the police enforcement. After each call was placed, the average response time was about 45 minutes to an hour and a half. There were times that it was maybe 30 minutes, but it went as long as an hour and a half to respond to the call. And each time that I made the call, it was after the fact that the car had parked there already, at the very least, an hour and a half, two hours. So by the time they came, it was very well at three-hour mark. They would have had to mark the car again because they have to have the proof for two hours. And then they went. And then they came back, in most cases, not at the two-hour mark. Sometimes it was three hours later, sometimes it was two and a half hour later. At times, it was even, I have it logged, by the way, sometimes it was an hour and a half later from the time that they were to return. So this happened several times and in some of those instances, because police enforcement was not at work, in fact, I had conversations with a couple of police enforcement people in their cars. One of them really stated that after 4:00 PM, you shouldn't be really calling us, you should be calling the police because we're gone, we've gone home at 7 o'clock. So when we do call the police, um, the police answer usually is, "We will get there when we have time." Basically, we have other priorities. We're not here to, um, police the street on parking situations. That's not our really job. We will come when we have the time. It's not a priority on the list. And again, in some cases, they've come after about an hour, hour and a half. In a case of, um, the 411 building, employees parking, which is the medical building, several of the employees have been cited, we've seen that. Several of the banquet hall on the corner have been cited, the employees. In fact, in one case, when I made the call, when the police came, I, I believe Officer Bateman, um, went to the 30-minute mark, when I told him that those cars were parked there over an hour and a half, he actually said that he couldn't, that he would mark them and then come back. And then a few minutes later, he called me and said, "Oh, I just want to let you know that all three cars moved." I said, "Really? How did that happen?" He goes, "I went and spoke with the owners of the banquet hall and the employees moved their cars." So I said, "Are you saying all three cars in the 30-minute zone were employees?" He said, "Yes, one of them was even handicapped." And I said, "Handicapped? How does that happen?" He says, "I don't know, I don't have their medical history." And I get that. But now we have a 30-minute parking, um, section, which the employees are privileged of the banquet hall to park their cars for the duration of the time that they're working. So we're asking for that 30-minute zone be changed back to what it was, which was a two-hour parking. And now, um, if, if you choose, because we're asking for the street to be a permitted parking, for that section to maybe not be permitted, but two-hours parking so that everyone has an opportunity to park there and not just the employees. So I think I've said what I needed to say and my time is about up, but there's a lot going on on that street, which is not right, and we're asking to please go back to what the residents were requesting, which is a permit parking on Lexington. And I know our time is coming up next week, which will complete the 90-day trial. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
It'll be March 3rd if the report comes back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, all of you. Guess I haven't really seen you in the new year altogether. I've seen you around places other than here. Anyway, Protem, good to see you and members of the council and staff. My name is Margaret Hammond. Okay, number one, hooray, hooray for South Glendale that everybody turns their nose up at. Our school down there, Cerritos, 23 in the nation, 23rd in the holding nation of America. They were picked. Isn't that great? Three years ago, they were way below that. But somehow, and a lot of the children are from low-income homes and, you know, it's a great, I think it's terrific. I just am really happy about it. I say to everybody, um, the only other one was maybe in La Cañada and who knows? They got tons of bucks to put their kids at this, into the schools. The bulky item is out of control again in my area. It's one of the reasons I'm here. And you call 818-548-3916. We're rapidly slipping back into being, looking like part of LA down where I live. In the 1,200 block of Boynton, it's an apartment house, TV, I don't know how big the TV is, now the screen is broken, sofa, mattresses, all of this happens from the first of the month usually, when people move in and out. Now, I, I believe that the apartment owners, it should be enforced that the apartment owners, that the stuff that's in front of their place, either they get rid of it, a call on it, or they be charged. It's enough's enough. They're turning it into a slum. And the other thing that I'm very concerned about is the assentia. I was here before, I talked about it, I told what was going on, how I couldn't get through to them, called them over and over. Finally, a week and a half later, somebody did call me back. And, but what's bothering me is I understand that they're applying for grants again that they would be using supposedly for the homeless people in the winter months. Since they didn't use the money for that, for the homeless for last year, 2014, they couldn't, their excuse, they couldn't find a building. The National Guard's been there, I don't understand why we're not using that, it's idiotic. But anyway, so why are they asking for more money when they didn't use the money from last year for the homeless, for the winter program? I want to know about that. If they're getting more money, then why, why they're not using last year's money? And then I understand you're, you're going to be, there's a committee to investigate regarding the problem about not having a Rosefloat after 100 years of Rosefloat. Um, I, you know, I don't know about you guys, but I hear from my family in Canada all about, "Oh yeah, the Rosefloat, everybody talks about it." And then we up, a city like us with money, we're talking billions of dollars and we can't afford to have a Rosefloat. But then they said, you know, we did have a, a really terrific Rosefloat committee, but they resigned because of stuff that went on from one person, underhanded, that the money that was given from Dreaming of Roses was put into a private bank under a private person, individual's name, and it's in the Bank of America and I have the account number. I have a person that can provide that as to the situation. So, and that was a good hunk of money that would have paid for the Rosefloat. So now I understand you're going to put up $50,000 from the city and then the rest of it will be coming from private sources, I, I hope. And, and I will work for that, well, however the best way I can. It's disgusting, absolutely disgusting to think that after 100 years, we couldn't afford to put up a Rosefloat. It's just beyond me. You know, and, you know, the other thing with assentia, they had a city employee that contacted me finally and sent me letters and all that stuff. I've got it all here, Yvette, whatever, and this silly-looking head top of the paper, I think it's absolutely ridiculous, whatever you call that silly thing up there that's, I guess we paid somebody to design it. And, you know, they told the women, the status of Women Committee, they couldn't have an employee, there was no money. They again told the Clean and Beautiful Committee, which did a huge amount of money, the citizens, what, 35, 40 years worked at it to keep down graffiti and to keep down trash, get rid of the smoking, the cut markets, cuts, all that. We did that and we worked hard at it and we kept coming back. But what I'm saying is to end up with telling us that you can't afford an employee to help out that committee and yet here she, look at the batch of stuff that was sent to me from a city employee for assentia, for assentia.
Thank you.
I think that's not right at all. Thank you.
Najarian?
Mr. Weaver?
I've heard this argument before that I've taken money because you're referring to me. Dream Your Roses is a nonprofit corporation in the state of California with a charter and bylaws. There's no money in the account because I stopped it during the Great Recession. Everything is documented through my treasurer, who's the CPA. I never took a penny. I put hundreds and hundreds of hours in and you, along with a few people, have the gall to stand up and say, "I've been siphoning it off and putting it in a Bank of America account." You bring that information in and give it to the city attorney. Otherwise, then you quit accusing me of lies.
Did I say your name?
We don't, no, no, we won't.
Give me a break. Who are you talking about?
We don't have a back and forth.
You're running up to something.
No, let's, you two can, you can take it outside afterwards, but...
I don't care to talk to her. She's a looney tune.
I don't want to talk to her.
Well, let's not...
It's not the first time, Margaret, that you've done this to me.
Have you been hiking again up in that Shaw Canyon area?
Oh, no.
That crankingness.
Oh, we took care of the methane gas up there. It's now down at Grayson.
Okay, our next speaker is Mr. Mohill. But, Mr. Mohill, I have to, I have to advise you that discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. And seeing as pensions and pension reform was part of the agenda, I hope you're not too hamstrung in your remarks.
Nope, I'll be just as good as you are, sir. Good evening, Mayor Protem. Najarian, my name is Mike Mohill. Recently, I came before this council, critical of the politics of our public employees' unions and their relationship with council members. Councilman Najarian challenged me to find a more conservative city than Glendale when it came to pension planning. I said, "We can look at the city of Yorbelinda, who only a couple of years ago outsourced their police department to the county to save over $3 million annually."
Mr. Mohill, can we stop the clock for a moment, please? I do appreciate your remarks and they're certainly pertinent to the administration of the city. However, we are limited by the rules of the Ralph and Brown Act, which...
Yes, but, and I am, and I am also allowed to respond back to your challenge. You said to me that I had a vendetta against the police and the fire department last time, and that's not the truth. You only want to hear what you want to hear. I said they could switch their badges like they did in the city of Yorbelinda and worked for the county.
But just don't say pensions. I'll let you speak, but don't say pensions and...
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. City Attorney, if it's part of the whole thing, it's, it's liable. It's not the whole thing is not pension, Mr. Najarian, like you want to think.
Let's ask for a ruling from our judge here, our city attorney.
It's what you want to hear and that's not what I said.
Just a moment, please.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I think the, the discussion that we just had was very broad in the context of pensions, employee compensation, and to that extent, you could limit discussion to not include the discussion of pensions as part of Mr. Mohill's remarks.
So don't talk about pensions. You want to talk about the challenge...
We're going to go...
...lease service, Orange County, but don't, we can't talk about pensions because we had about an hour, not that it was too long. I'm sorry if I, if I said it was too long. I thought it was just the right, just the right length also. But I want to hear what you say, but let's not go back to pensions. Talk about the challenge that I gave you.
I, I'm going to give you your challenge because you said to me, sir...
Let's go back where we were on the clock, Arum, and let's get to the...
Can we just imagine, if we, if, if, if we just imagine how much more money the largest police force of Glendale could save by outsourcing to LA County Sheriff's Services? If the cities of La Cañada, Flintridge, Malibu, Calabasas, and over 50% of the cities in LA County used county services to save money, why can't our Jill City? For the record, only cities that contract with Calpers have filed for bankruptcy. Four years, increase in public employees' contributions to their pensions have been offset with the picking up, well, you, did you allow me to talk about it?
Go ahead, go ahead. It's not specific to Glendale.
This whole thing is only five minutes long. You're making, you got, you spoke a whole...
Just trying to follow the rules.
Yeah, right.
I'm the Protem today. They made me a sick and they threw me in this position.
It's not a matter of, it's not a matter of who's right, Mr. Najarian, it's what's right.
Go ahead.
May I have my time back, please?
Roll it back if, about 10 seconds or so.
How about 20? Thank you. For the record, increase in public employees' contributions to their pensions have been offset with taxpayers picking up the higher costs of their salaries, bonuses, pensions, overtime pay, Lexus medical plans. Why under your 10-year watch, Councilman Najarian, have pension costs to the taxpayers of Glendale increased two and a half times? Councilman Najarian, you have illegally increased the water and electric rates of GWP above the utility operational costs and approved illegally transferring millions of dollars from GWP into the pockets of our union workforce, a workforce that contributed approximately $30,000 in PAC money for your last two elections, a clear conflict of... interest. Why should the taxpayers guarantee the annual seven point five percent rate of return investments of the employee corrupt pension system, Calpers? Trying to protect his council boss's past decision, Mr. Ochoa stated, "We should not replace Glendale police officers with a private security person." Our city manager knew exactly what I meant by replacing Glendale's police officers with county sheriffs, who are, on average, paid less. Glendale's finest police officers are trained and hired from LA County and Orange County Sheriff Training Schools. Mr. Ochoa chuckled and said the taxpayers of LA County also contribute to the Los Angeles County Employees Retirement Association Pension Plan. But he failed to mention the Los Angeles County taxpayers do not guarantee their failed investments, unlike Glendale and other cities that belong to the corrupt pension system, Calpers. Councilman Najarian stated I wanted to fire Glendale police and firefighters and that I had a vendetta against them. Councilman Najarian, a lawyer and a so-called conservative Republican, once again twisted my facts. I never, ever said fire our police and fire personnel. In the city of Yorbalinda, many police officers traded in their badges and went to work for the county. Mr. Najarian only wanted to hear what he wanted to hear and not what I said. Councilman Najarian has a vendetta against the good people of Glendale. When he excessively raises our fees and taxes to pay the bloated salaries and pension of our public employees and enable many employees to retire as millionaires to pay the 1.4 billion dollars now of unfunded pension liabilities, councilmembers Najarian, Freeman, and Weaver will need a fire sale of our 900 million dollars of city assets. GWP, City Hall, Alex Theater, Fire and Police Station, parking structure, libraries, neon art museum, and still the taxpayer will have to come up with another 600 million dollars in cash to pay the debt they helped to create. Councilmen Najarian, Freeman, and Weaver are the lapdogs of our Calpers union workforce. Thank you.
Can I make a general statement, Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Weaver, please.
Oral communications is in a shambles. We're not even following the Robert's Rules of Order on oral communication. You open the door for one, then you gotta open it for everybody else.
You're right, Mr. Weaver. I screwed up.
I'm sure Mr. Sinanian was here tonight. Now there's, there's a good mayor.
Bill Weisman?
Actually, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight at Oral Communications, and this is my second bite at the apple.
Oh, that's right.
So I, I, I'm going to-
But since we've broken all the rules today, we might as well err on the side of transparency.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. And, and in exchange for that, I will keep it extremely brief. I heard something truly astounding tonight, which is that bicycle riders don't pay any taxes. You know, I have a bicycle and I really want this deal. Who do I call at the IRS? Who do I call to not be able to pay my gas taxes? Who do I call not to be able to pay my sales taxes? I do not know a single bicycle owner in the city of Glendale who does not also own a car and who does not pay all of the same taxes that everybody else pays. And so I'm not sure what kind of bizarre alternate universe Mr. Mohill lives in where bicycle riders somehow are exempt from paying taxes. But I'm here to tell you it's not this one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. I have no other cards.
Oh, good. I knew we adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, and a second. We are adjourned.
I do.
Yes.
No.
Yes.